I went around and turned off your microphones when we started, just because they pick up a lot more now. So if everyone can go ahead and turn them back on, there is a master mute button over there that Janice has. So if we get too loud or rowdy, she'll, she can shut us down. But that way, hopefully, this is better for folks in the audience and also all of our folks that may be watching online. All right, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And we'll do a quick roll call and conflict of interest check. Trustee Nolte.
Here, no.
Trustee Abbott.
Here, no.
Treasurer Metz.
Here, no.
Clerk Stamboellis.
Here, no.
Trustee Sanders.
Here, no.
Trustee Sakinga. Supervisor Scott here, also none. We'll move into approval of the agenda. Been moved by trustee Sakinga, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by trustee Abbott. Any discussion about the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda for the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. And we'll move into presentations. So trustee Nolte and trustee Sakinga, we have a time set aside here for presentation around the single hauler trash project.
Sure. Hi, everyone. I guess I'll start.
Yes.
You jump in when you, jump in whenever you want. Um, this has been an ongoing project for a long time, and I want to convey again, no decision has been made yet. We are starting our more community engagement and walk through the presentation and hopefully answer a lot of your questions. And then I hope to hear your concerns because as we move through negotiations and should this go forward, we want all the questions answered. We want everything that the residents are concerned about and need to know so we can take it on to our negotiations and just in our discussions of the topic as we move forward. So with that, we'll get going. Why single hauler? Good question. How many years ago? Five years ago, six years ago, we made four pillars. The board, the existing board at the time, made four pillars to govern by. It was good government, environmental stewardship, communication and community enrichment. And single hauler really impacts two of those, the environmental stewardship and the community enrichment. And I'll walk through the goals here in a second as we go. Everybody thinks this is a new topic. It's not. It was discussed over 10 years ago. Jim, I'm sure you were involved in those discussions. It was in our 2023 master plan that it came up. It was included this topic. In early '24, we held a let's talk trash, just to get a kind of a feeling of what the temperature was. In March of 2024, we had a survey on our website where we had, this says 450 respondents because we actually had over 600, but we ran the data off the 450, just by how we rolled out the data. And so that kind of gave us a mandate to move forward and we released the RFP in early '25 this year. The web-based results that we did showed that almost 79.6% of our residents would opt in to have curbside trash service at their home. It's a very large number. And as we went through, what services would you be interested in? 72% were interested in trash, 12% were interested in yard waste. I think some of our, our neighborhood type areas, the associations, they don't have any place to get rid of their yard trash. Recycling continues to be a large subject. And also 12% said, no, they don't want any curbside recycling at their home, which gives us a basis for the program. But we started to identify our goals. And one of the goals was looking to reduce our cost to the residents. And improving all the time, we want to reduce the cost, but we want to improve the services for curbsides to our homes. And roughly, there's 2,800 homes in the township. So that's what vendors were bidding on, trying to capture those 2,800 homes as we move through this. The other thing was trying to maintain our road costs. And I'll show you, we've invested some very large dollars in our roads over the last five years. And we're going into a maintenance period, which Karen can discuss more. That's really, she's led that way. We want to extend the life of our landfills and we want to change the environmental quality. And we want to increase safety. There's a lot of trucks that are moving through our township every week. Currently, we have seven to eight providers, trash providers walking through or driving through our township. Some do trash only, some do trash and recycling. There's just a wide variety of trucks going through. Karen, you want to walk through the road numbers briefly?
2021, the board of trustees approved a, basically a five-year plan with the goal of bringing all the roads to good condition.
We worked with the, we had some public input on what criteria we should use to, for scheduling the roads. And we worked with the road commission to pull some data and sequence the roads. And we're just coming to the end of that five-year project this year with the idea that all the roads are now in good condition. And the total cost to Dexter Township was in excess of $2 million. So it's, it was, it was a real, a real investment of public dollars in that. And if you turn to the next page in the presentation, you'll see that one of the things that we learned on our local roads committee is that trash trucks have a disproportionate impact on gravel roads in particular. They're really not engineered to bear that kind of weight. And they can't be stopped during, there's a frost law period when you're not supposed to have heavy vehicles on the roads at all. Garbage trucks can't stop running all year round. So they're, they're running on these local rural roads even, even in March when we've got those freezes thaw and the, and the roads already stabilized. So you can see that if you look down at the bottom, the fully loaded weight of a trash truck is, is up to 70,000 pounds compared to 3,200 pounds for a compact car. Or even a school bus is only 26,000 pounds. So, so with that significant investment that we've made, we felt like one way that we could protect that investment is to reduce the number of trash trucks on those roads from, you know, five, six, seven trash trucks per week to, to just one. And I would just add that the road commission has also told us that none of our gravel roads are really engineered for more than 500 daily uses. They, and we only have two roads in the township that have more than 500 local daily uses. And that's here on River Drive and Wiley Road. But you can see that a trash truck is equal to 1,000 daily users. And some studies show it upwards of 2,000 and more daily users equivalency. So, so it's really, our, our rural roads are really simply not engineered to bear that kind of weight.
Right. And it's not only that, we have seven haulers in the community right now. All those seven haulers, most of them are providing trash and recycling services, which is two trucks per hauler. There are a couple that only do trash in the township. So rather than seeing seven trucks on our road a week, we're probably seeing more of a number of 12 moving through the community. And some of our subdivisions have up to four different providers in their, in their community, in their local road. So we want to provide trash service, recycling, and this is curbside services, trash, recycling, yard waste, for those who wish it, and food waste. Food waste, yard waste and food waste would be operational from April to December during the season. And the food waste would automatically be put in with the yard waste. It would not require another truck. Initial conversations are that every homeowner would be given two carts, the 96 gallon carts, one for trash, one for recycling, if you choose to use that. And yard waste would be collected in the brown paper bags and then picked up in those type of things. The overall program, the concept that we've been working on probably from day one is not to mandate the service, is strictly for the residents to opt in or opt out. If you wish to have curbside trash service, you would set up an account with the trash hauler. It had, the township has nothing to do with that. We are not handling the billing. It is not our goal to be in the trash service. It is strictly our goal to improve services and bring down costs and maintain our roads. Are our three big goals that we'd like to reach. So it is strictly, it is, a lot of people have, there's been a lot of misinformation that this is a mandated program and it is not a mandated program. That is not on our goals, that is not in our conversations at all. So in February, we, we put out our RFP and four bidders came back. LRS, Priority Stevens and Waste Management. And here are their numbers for trash, for recycling, for yard worth, in yard waste on a monthly and a quarterly basis. And the next one, because most of us pay our trash services on a quarterly basis, this is the one that's interesting. So these are the numbers that if you have trash only, is the first column. If you have trash and recycling, that's where the bids came back. And if you choose to have trash recycle and yard waste, which would naturally encompass food waste from April to December, there's your price per quarter. So looking at this numbers and it through our conversations, I will say the subcommittee, which has been, we've been working with Theo Egomont from Washaw County.
Karen, can you go back before you go back to, to the recommendation? I want to say that this is, the low cost bid, the waste management bid is between a quarter and half of the cost that most, that the, that the survey respondents reported that they're paying.
All these numbers will come in here in the loop.
So I.
In the loop.
We'll publish them. So, so that low number, that waste management number compared to what waste management is charging current customers, and about 30% of the township are current customers of waste management, they're reducing what current customers would pay by more than half.
Yeah.
And it, and if, I, I mean, speaking for myself, I was pretty shocked by that outcome. And I want to also emphasize that they are locked into this price for five years.
Yeah.
So, so they're, they're, they have a cap of a 5% increase on that price for five years. And at the end of the five years, we, we can stop doing single hauler if we don't like it or, or, or send it out to bid again or whatever, if the price goes up in a way that we think is not tenable.
And the five years, these were year number one. The next years are already lined out. We already have the numbers of what the cost would be.
So can we, can we just ask people in the audience if you need to speak to each other? It's, it's difficult for me to hear even from up here. So you're welcome to go out to the lobby and, and, and talk out there. Go ahead, Karen.
Okay. So we were very surprised by these numbers, actually. And it's come out well beyond. So obviously, our subcommittee, we've been working with Washaw County Public Works with Theo. And Theo had a grant that contracted with recycle.com, with Matt Nod from recycle.com and Karen and Karen. And we've been working on this for, I don't know, the last six months. It feels like it's all I talk about. So we are recommending that we move forward in discussions with waste management. Currently, we feel generally they have the strong infrastructure and the base to support the township and not to, I think we all realize that the township has been fired twice by trash companies in the last three, four years. They're currently servicing over 30% of our community already. So it would be a fair, I don't want to say easy transition, but easier. The, they were by far the lowest competitive bid. We've locked in the prices for five years, should we move forward. And we continue to negotiate to see if we can fulfill the majority of our requests and our goals. There's a lot of subtopics that are going on. But our recommendation, and this is kind of the first time the board's hearing all this also, is that we move forward in, in communications with waste management. Again, no final decision has been made by any means. There are so many open topics. Here's a few of them. We have penalty clauses to negotiate, snowbird, bulk items, billing procedures. We need a project manager. There's indemnifications, there's insurances, how we handle the HOAs that already have their own little mini hauler agreements. And educating, we have 2,800 homes to educate should we move forward with this and all that has to be side. We want to engage the public. This is, will be our third public engagement. We will schedule one or two in June. We will schedule more in July. And just to hear every, what everybody has to say, because every bit of information that you're thinking, we want to make sure we didn't overlook that point and that we can address all the points of concerns through our residents. So moving forward, this is kind of a rough timeline that we're looking at. To start with a coffee chat next month. And then next month, should our conversations continue, we will come to the board of trustees and see if they want to formalize, if we all want to formalize our continued conversations with waste management. A little more public engagement mid-July. In July, we hope to have the initial contracts outlaid if we can come to terms with all our topics. And if we make a decision to move forward, we're looking at October and we're looking for implementation January 1. There's a waste management would like six months. If a decision, if we decided today, they still want six months. There's trucks to buy, there's people to hire, there's routes to get, there's accounts to set up. There's a lot of moving pieces to this project and it impacts every single house in our township. So please understand, we're trying to move slow and to answer all the questions. It is not a done deal by any means. That's about it.
Thank you very much for the presentation. We're going to have a board discussion later in the public hearing. But does anyone, before we, before we move on from the presentation, does anyone have any questions for either of the Karens from the board? All right.
Did you have a question? Oh, you might come up to the mic.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Oh, I thought you were doing it.
No, just from the board first.
From the board.
Yeah, just from the board. And now, now we'll move into public comment. We, I, I am sure we have a lot of folks who would like to comment. We will make sure that everyone gets their opportunity. We asked that everyone keep their comments limited to three minutes. I also want to point out that the board during public comment time does not answer back. So it's not a question and answer period. If we do have a few questions, I, this is not normal procedure, but since this is for a public hearing under the board discussion topic, when we get there, I will set aside a few minutes for some back and forth question and answer from the public as well. So for the, for any of the public comment right now, keep your comments to three minutes. Make sure when you come up to the microphone, please speak directly into the microphone so the people at home on Zoom can hear you. And tell us your name and address for the official record. And come on up, you can start us off.
My name is Tom Aiman at 8930 Dexter Pinky Road. And my question is, is my understanding that there's just going to be a single cover, a single hauler and all other haulers are going to be excluded from curbside pickup? Isn't that correct? Now, are you going to do this with a franchise? Because how else can you legally keep other people, other haulers from coming in? So are you going to give waste management, as an example, a franchise to do this? Like Bell Telephone had a franchise to do the telephone stuff until AT&amp;T took them over. Because I don't see how you can tell other people they can't do business in Dexter Township if it's legal unless you grant a franchise. Have you thought about that? I see a lot of, no, no comments.
Well, I don't think we're supposed to comment, babe.
Yeah, yeah, not, not question and answer right now, but.
That's all my question.
Thank you.
Hello, Paul Ledwich, 9620 Stinchfield Woods Road. Like some, just some feedback from the board on the, the trip issue. You know, in the full suite of services from pickup, yard waste, how many trips are included with, with that full suite? It's not going to be one truck, I assume, doing recycle, trash and yard waste and food waste. So how does that figure into the overall trip issue? So we're not, you know, we have a clear aspect. And then pricing, waste management is aggressive with their increases. So it won't be long before they're back up to a higher number, I'm sure. And then if you would put in the, the information on the numbers, you know, the 32 bucks per, per month for basic pickup, what, you know, the 5% increase. And then you mentioned a project manager to kick this thing off. Is there going to be a cost for the project manager? Is that going to be a third party, if it's township hires, you know, those type of expenses? So it's all, and then just a baseline thing. I think the pillar, you should include good government in that pillar because number one, is this a good thing for government to be even involved in or other things? Not just specifically this, but I think that pillar does apply. Should government be involved in this or should it just be a free market, you know, situation? So I would add that into your analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Korniskia, 5345 Carriage Lane, into the Carriage Hill subdivision. Is there possible to put that, those numbers up with estimates by the companies? Because this is amazing. I can't believe it's true and that mine align itself with this comment. So like waste management maybe jacking up the prices really quick. I just checked my payouts, waste management over the last four years. That number up there just blew me away. I'll tell you what, I just paid them last year. I paid by, by the year for the last several years.
500.
So I own, I'm trash only with waste management. And that's a quarterly 3225?
That's their bid.
I pay them annually. I get a discount, I think, either for being a vet or for senior, being a senior. In my last, when I signed up last, at the beginning of the year, I paid 36928. How can they possibly offer 3225 a quarter against that number? I, I gotta, that, that doesn't seem possible. So it's just, I want to point that out. The year before, I paid with them 32216. And in '23, I paid 30150. And the lowest number was in '22, was it 23985? But still, that's going back four years, that's cheaper than all four years.
Hi, I'm Robert Horner, I'm at 9157 Horseshoe Bend. My main concern of hearing this, you're saying this is entirely voluntary program. And I know a lot of people said they would opt in, but if the opt-in rate is not as high as the survey shows, then those people are getting the trash picked up somewhere else and you may end up with just having the same number of trucks on the road anyway because it's not a mandatory program. Whereas the first, well, the earlier speakers alluded to, there's not a franchise granted to one company to ensure that, that we don't have the extra trucks on the road. And that's, to me, seems like the main benefit of doing this is to, you know, save on the road, road maintenance. I know we discussed this back when Horseshoe Bend was repaved and tried to establish a single, single hauler contract then and it just wasn't enough interest in it. But that's my main concern.
Any snow public comment?
Jim Grolet, 9933 Algonquin. I have a couple of questions. Is there going to be built into this a clause that they can pause it and not charge you with startup? Because sometimes if you pause your service for four or five months, they charge you with startup fee. And I hope that they would not do that because other trash haulers don't do that. It's a fight, it's my understanding that 5% increases per year, not over the whole five years. Okay. I have waste management down in Florida and I have to tell you, they're a good, they're a good reliable company. On time, well, they change time, but you know, they've always been there and picked up everything. And the other thing is this going to be, is there going to be a bulk pickup involved in this? So people have a bed or a dresser, they want to have all the way, they can call them and have them come. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say, everyone's been great on time. I keep hitting reset on my timer, expecting someone to go over.
Here we go.
Sorry. My name is Mary Ann Kimball, 9960 Dexter Pinky Road, Pinky. And where to start? First of all, we were customers of Monroe's, which was a locally owned company. And I believe that waste management for a while had bought them out. And myself and neighbors had really poor experience with waste management. Their lack of communication, lack of being able to get ahold of them, prices going up aggressively like someone else mentioned. Even though they're coming in with this low quote and people might criticize you if you don't go with that company, I caution you, do your research. Also, I'm wondering, along with that, are these other people, Michigan-owned companies or local-owned companies? Because waste management definitely is not. I think we mailed our checks to Chicago. So that was the thing about waste, waste management, just be very careful there. And I had the same concern about if it isn't mandatory, then how does that reduce the number of trucks on the road? And I don't want to sound like I'm not supporting this, I'm just asking. We wondered, I don't think I could, I heard everything. I don't understand what food waste, exactly what that is and how you would put it out. And I'm sure you'll probably send us an email and can tell us that. And also, if some of the services are only, like the food collection and the yard, whatever that is, collection, is only part of the year, do you pay for it all year round? Or is that only part of the year that you pay for it? I wasn't clear about that. I think, I think that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate the meeting.
Thank you.
Louise Reed, 9718 Willis Road, Pinky. I just have one quick question. I know I keep, it's not mandatory, but are any of these requiring a percentage of people signing up to get this discount? Because I've been dragged into too many non-mandatory items and all of a sudden they needed a quota of people. And all of a sudden, people are locked in whether they want it or not. So that's what I want to find out.
Hey, Bodie, 98645 Park Lake Avenue. I think it's misleading to say it's not mandatory. You have your choice of taking this offer or not getting trash picked up. And, and that's not, that's mandatory, really. It's not, there's nothing optional about it. So I think you have to be very careful how it's presented.
Hi, I'm Kim Aiken, 7184 Mountain Ridge Road. First, I want to say thank you for putting in all this work because you obviously did a lot of work. I'm, I'm, my questions are, I'm already a waste management customer. We started with waste management, we got lousy service, we switched to someone else, they got bought out by waste management. You know, it's like it comes and goes lately, we've had with late waste management and the service has been really good. So that's great. We're paying more than this. I'm hoping that if it's a single payer or a single, not a single payer, but a single hauler, that we will get this lower rate and that it'll be locked in like the contract for five years. I just want to make sure that that's a five-year thing, not a, this is our plan now and next year it's more. And then we can, since we're making our own contract, we can bid for each of these different things. Because some people on my street have trash, some people have trash recycling. None of us have yard waste, none of us are going to want yard waste. We live in the woods, if we just toss it over the fence if we have one. So I mean, that's not going to happen. So I mean, that's not going to happen in my, so I just want to make sure that we aren't locked into all of the above. If we have a, if we don't want. Thanks.
Rick Monier, one, three, five, one, one, Island Lake Road. We do need to go forward this, you guys have done a great job. Island Lake Road right now is terrible. The holes are deeper than the cars. And so that's how we're filling the holes now. So that it's, this would be an improvement for the township and the people. Thank you.
I do appreciate all your time and that.
Just tell us your, just tell us your name.
Helene Lasecki, eight, nine, four, four, Dexter Gable Lanes. Thank you for all the work you guys have done. I like the idea. I have LRS. They also have become very aggressive on raising their prices. They do a great job. Whenever my husband and I have work to be done, just a thought, we don't go with the highest. We don't go with the lowest and we look at the middle people. Just, and that seems to work for us.
Thank you. Additional public comments?
Carriage Lane, again, just want to make a, have it, but we, I live on Carriage Lane. So only got four driveways. We have three different haulers right now.
All right, Lois. I saw you, saw you coming up there.
Spearbaum, nine eight nine seven Plumbing Road. I too have had LRS calling and haven't thought very well of them. Communication with a waste company is something to think about. My assumption with this, whoever you choose, is that the township does not directly have to answer a customer's question, you didn't pick me up. And by the way, they have cameras on their trucks now. They can tell whether you're lying or telling the truth. And, uh, handling those basic problems. I too have concerns about low pricing and then five years it goes skyward. I had the experience with LRS of getting an email, oh, you're up ten dollars. I lost my little senior discount, it's up ten dollars. So that's a concern on how the communication role is. The other, other issue is or question is WC, uh, are they, does that go away and I no longer have to have that show up on my tax bill? Are we still going to approve that? Why? Since we have all these options now available to us.
I, I currently have the garbage man of Livingston County. And I have to say they are very professional. And the one thing I like about it is when you call them, you talk to a real person. You don't get a recording saying they're going to call you back. So in, in fact, when I came back home, they called me a week before to make sure I wanted to start it off again. That's how personalized it is. A lot of people at Portage Lake have that, so. Might think about puts this thing on the ballot, see how people go for it on the ballot. Everybody loves their, their own garbage service for some reason.
Oh, we got two coming up. Sorry.
Just want to caution the board. Like all good intent, there's always unintended consequences. And if you give this franchise to somebody, you have to be prepared to enforce the restrictions put on that vendor. Now I've had waste management for a long time. And they can be good service on and on and off and off and on and off. But when I call them up and the threat of losing my business, they do something. And they do something good for some period of time. But in this case, the franchise, they don't have, nobody has a choice to get somebody else. So the burden is going to be on you folks and you have to be willing to accept it. Because right now the zoning ordinance, you don't do anything unless somebody complains. You're not looking to enforce it. I know you don't have the money to do it, but that's an issue.
I think it would be good if everybody who wants to speak for the first time could speak and then people want to come up the second time. You know, for if you've already spoken, they kind of hold it.
All right, go ahead, come on.
My name is Diane Monier, one, three, five, one, one, Island Lake Road. Right now, we are not using any trash pickup. We live out in the country. We recycle our compost, our yard waste, food waste. We facilitate places like this for our recycling. Maybe once, uh, every quarter, we might have a small amount of trash that we take over to the landfill. But is this going to be something that is going to be showing up on our taxes? Or we are able to just opt out of it completely? Because I don't want to pay for anything that we're never going to use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments?
Lynn Munson, ninety-five, eighty, Horseshoe Bend. Thanks for all the work. And I think this is a great example of what good government should do because none of us as individuals have sort of the wherewithal to put it all together. So thank you for all this work regardless of how it ends up. I was shocked. Uh, I, I looked back at my emails. It was like five years ago this week. I was awakened at two-thirty in the morning because we were, uh, letting any Tom, Dick and Harry come pick up trash. And a, a trash hauler came through, woke me up at two-thirty in the morning. And so I called the supervisor and said, surely you must have some way of preventing this. And he said, no, we don't, we have no control over this. And what shocked me, I thought that the township would have some control over people that come into the township to do work. So I called, he said, well, you'll have to call the hauler himself. So, uh, the guy apologized, but he said, well, I cover a wide area, so I have to work all night. So I think that's an example of why the township being involved is highly appropriate. And I remember when I first moved to Ann Arbor in nineteen ninety-five, now thirty years ago, I distinctly remember that Mylan Township was doing this very thing. And it was the same thing, a series of meetings. I think it went on for probably more than a year. And I'm not sure, I, I didn't have time to check, but I assume they still have such a program. But thirty years ahead of us, we're a little slow to the game. And I think it's a good idea. And I think those numbers kind of show that when a company can pick up very efficiently in an area, the numbers come down. It's, it's just the way the economics work. And then lastly, um, also, uh, just the whole truck issue. It's just, it seems so strange to me that we would have five haulers come through Carriage Hill. This gentleman here was mentioning, we, we got, uh, paving assessments. I don't know, it's eight or nine or ten years ago, how long it's been now. But big chunk of money every month or every two tax bills go to that. So again, why are we having five trucks come through every week instead of one? I mean, if you live in the city in Ann Arbor, you know, the truck comes through and it gets your house, that house, this house, all the houses at once. It's, it's called efficiency. So anyway, thank you for the work you've done. Appreciate it.
Any additional public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move into, um, board discussion. And, um, I know that there were a number of questions asked, uh, during public comment. Uh, again, this is not standard procedure. Uh, so if you are staying for our meeting that follows, typically if you do public comment, we will respond to you after the meeting, right? It's not something that's, that's usually a back and forth. Given the interest in this topic, um, I do want to give us the opportunity here as part of board discussion to answer some of those questions. Um, and so as the answers are, are happening, if you find that you still have, uh, a question that we haven't answered, I, I'll call for you to kind of raise your hand, uh, here in a little bit. And we'll, we'll try to make sure that we get as many answers, um, done as we can, before we move into our regular meeting and, and close out the public hearing. Does that sound all right to, to the board as well? I, I think we can. I, I think I wrote down, um, many of them as well. But I, I want to make sure that if the board has questions that we, we hit all of that at once. So any board discussion, you know, just like normal, if, if the board wants to, to speak, just raise your hand. I'll call on you. Um, and if you want to answer questions as you heard them, we can do that as we go through. So Karen, I'll start with you and let you answer some of those. Absolutely.
Our attorney isn't here tonight, so I don't want to give legal advice. But we did pass an ordinance that enables us to have a single hauler. And under the, under that ordinance, we are empowered to exclude other providers in the township. So it's, I, I don't know if it's a franchise or not. I don't know what the name is. I think if we do a town hall, we should have our attorney here to answer any legal questions specifically. But we are empowered to exclude other providers and to select one vendor and not to manage it directly ourselves.
Can I add one thing to that also? I think, aren't there, uh, I think there's just under thirteen hundred townships in the state of Michigan and almost seven hundred have already gone to single hauler.
So, so it's definitely allowable under the law, so to, to exclude vendors. What, um, the, the feedback on the trip issue, how many trucks would be providing services? There is a separate truck for recycling and a separate truck for trash and a separate truck for compost. And that compost is the food, somebody asked, what's food waste versus what's, what's, what's yard waste? And what does all that mean? It's just another category of solid waste. It's, it's, uh, it's organic matter that can be converted into, into soil amendments, basically. And it's treated differently than recycling and it doesn't go to the landfill. So it's a third truck that is for compost and they collect the yard waste and the food waste. And you do not pay for it in the winter. You only pay for it when, when the collection is occurring. Can we calculate the increases? Yes, we can do that. We'll, we'll do that and put that on our website. And it is compounding. So you know, it's five percent in year two and then it would be a net five percent of the one hundred and five percent of, in, in year three. So it, it's not going to be twenty-five percent. It's going to be a little bit higher than twenty-five percent higher at year five. But we'll calculate that and put it on our, on our website. This should be a good government initiative. I agree with that. And in fact, the road improvements is under the good government category. So this does contribute also to the good government, uh, priority. And the strategic plan, and we'll update our report to reflect that. How can they offer three, thirty-two, twenty-five a quarter? It's just so cheap, it seems unbelievable. This is pure speculation on my part, but I think there's two things going on. One is the economies of scale that was mentioned by a, a few people, that, that it's just not much more expensive for them to pick up in the same location on the same day, one more house. But they've also built a large facility in Detroit. And they, they, and it's a recycling facility and we want that, right? Everybody in southeast Michigan should want good recycling happening in Detroit because that's where the Detroit River is and, and it's a very important part of the watershed and all of that. And they need to make that facility pencil, to make that facility profitable. They need recycling materials to go there so they can monetize what they collect here, the metals and so on. They can turn that into revenue in their Detroit facility. So, so they've got marginal cost, minimal cost increases to, to expand from thirty percent of the township to eighty percent of the township, combined with revenue that they're going to collect in, in Detroit at their new receiving facility. What happens if people go to other providers and it doesn't work? That's not going to be, that's disallowed. If we decide to go this way, there will be no other, um, providers operating in Dexter Township. Is there going to be a clause to pause without penalty? Yes, there will, um, and.
We're calling it the snowbird clause. That's just what we've named it. And it will be, um, and this is just initial conversations. It will be a three-month pause, once a year. You could pause for three months.
And there will be bulk, bulk pickup? Will there be bulk pickup? Yes, with, um, with advance notice. And I believe it's no cost, which was another shocker because I just, I just paid to have them pick up a, a bulk item from my house and it was thirty-five dollars and.
And it would be, our initial conversations is you can't call and get a bulk pickup this week. It's one week a month. You can schedule to have a bulk item picked up. So they send one truck to pick up all, two trucks, whatever it takes to pick up all the bulk items out of the township. It will not be, oh, this week I need to get rid of my bed. Next week I need to get rid of a chair. It'll be once a month, one bulk, well, that's what we're shooting for, one bulk item once a month. Included in the price.
Yeah. So the question about what does it mean that it's mandatory or not mandatory? So yes, if you want curbside collection, you would have to go with waste management if we, if the board makes that decision to move forward. You would not have to take the service at all. So Diane, to answer your question, it, you, the opt-in and when we use that language, not mandatory, what we mean is you can say, I don't need for any curbside collection at all. I decline the service. And then you don't pay anything and it's not on your taxes and it's, it's not reflected at all. But if you want curbside pickup, you, you would have to go with, with waste management. And so we will work on tweaking that language to make that, that clear. I can understand.
And I just want to, just because the way you described that, none of it, none of this would be on your taxes. The township is not doing any of the payment. It would be, each individual would be setting up their account. I just want to make sure that was clear.
And, and each individual decides of the three options of service, trash collection, recycling and compost, you, it's mix and match. You can take any one of the three, all three or any two. And you will only be charged for the service that you select to provide. Is it really limited to a five percent increase per year? Well, we're going to, that's what they bid.
That's what we're negotiating.
And, and if, you know, the contract hasn't been approved, but that's what they said it was going to be. And, you know, we'll be working with our attorneys to make sure that our contract has teeth and that they, that they are held accountable to, to their bid. Will the special assessment district that supports the, the, um, the, the recycling operation here, the WWRA recycling operation in our parking lot go away? Um, that decision is going to, the drop dead on that decision for the next five years is February of twenty-twenty-six. So we will have a little bit of, um, go live to make, to, to see what. We've, we've talked about that many times. I mean, should we, you know, if we have this trash collection, do we need to have the parking lot? Um, and we've decided we can kind of kick that can down the road because it's hard to answer that question when we don't know, you know, what percent of the population is going to enroll in curbside recycling and all of that. So, so because we have a little bit of time and Theo Eggermont, um, who's the director of public, works at the county, manages the W, this, this special assessment district on behalf of WWRA. And he's on our committee. He's working with us and coming to us with options about what can we do? You know, could we allow people who opt into curbside recycling to opt out of the specialist assessment district? But then we need to know what the impact would be on WWRA, which is a local facility. And we want to support them and keep them strong. So, so that's kind of a separate decision.
It's all, it's all things we're studying as we move through this project.
Can we get a real person who will answer the phone? We can certainly ask.
Yeah, yeah, we're asking.
We can ask.
And, and the thing of you don't have contact with your trash company, there is power in numbers. And if waste management, if we have twenty-eight hundred homes in our township and we get twenty-five hundred, I'm just making up numbers, to enroll, that's power to talk to. And we will appoint somebody within our local building here to be a project manager. Their job is not, will not be to say, hey, my trash, you can't call the township and say, my trash didn't get picked up Tuesday. You have to do that with waste management. But if a huge feud, or not a huge, but if something really becomes contentious, then the project manager will be the interface between the resident and waste management. It gives us a little negotiating room, but it will, the township will not be taking calls that your trash didn't get picked up. But we are also looking at putting, to get some teeth into our contract, that there are penalties. If these performance issues do not happen, what is the township's ability to go back to waste management and make it right?
And then the last question that I have written down is will there be a cost for, for a township project manager? The answer to that is we have a staff position where if you stay for the next meeting, you'd hear an update on the hiring of that position. That's been in the budget for the last couple of years. It's a twenty-four hour a week position. And the, and the, uh, the responsibility of that position is to do all the special things that we're doing that resulted from the strategic plan that we were talking about. So that position exists and it, it's, it is given work to do and that person will be given work to do around, um, around single hauler. So there is a cost. So there is a cost, but it's not an added cost that, that, that's a salaried position and they're going to be coming here and every day, you know, or three days a week and doing their work. And this will be part of their work package. And there will always be new, new and interesting and different things for that person to do. But no marginal cost, no new cost for that. And I don't, I don't, did you guys get any other?
Yeah, there was one other on the time restrictions. Contractually, we're trying to outline a seven AM to seven PM operation time. That was one of them.
Not two-thirty AM.
Not two-thirty AM. No, we don't want that.
So did I, did I miss any question, anybody's question?
Are there additional? I think I would say it slightly differently than Karen did, that we get calls about everything when people are, are angry. That we're not going to hire a person just to interface with the trash haulers. But that we would have a point of contact here. So if that continued to happen, we'd be able to follow up.
Well, the, the, yeah, the opt-in, and that's why I was saying I can understand why the language is confusing. Because the opt-in is, you can decide you don't want, some communities, right, some communities, some communities, just like in Ann Arbor, you're paying, you know, somebody talked about Ann Arbor. Everybody pays for trash collection in Ann Arbor, whether you put your trash out on the street or not, it's part of your taxes. And so that's, that, that's truly mandatory. You're paying for it, whether you use the service or not. In Dexter Township, it'll be, if you use the service, you will pay for it. If, like the Monier, Monier family, you, you, you say, we don't need collection, then you don't have to pay for it. But if you want curbside collection, you are mandated to use the provider. And that's what single hauler means. Yeah. Correct. That's right. That's right. Yeah, that's what single hauler is.
Well, it's, it's an, it, so to start this process, it was a, it was an ordinance. There are a couple of things there. I've been asked this question a few times as I've, as I've talked to folks about it. And I think, so just like with any of our other ordinances, we, we would have to enforce the ordinance if there was an issue. I also think though, that in a situation like this with, with the trash hauler specifically, it doesn't make economic sense for them either. If, you know, for the business, first of all, they would know that, that we've gone to a single hauler system. They'd be notified that, that it would essentially be breaking our ordinance for them to be doing pickup in the township. But also, you know, I don't think they're going to come if, if seven people in the neighborhood are picked up by waste management and there's one house. I don't think most of the haulers are going to find that economically viable to continue to pick up one, one-offs here and there throughout the township. Now, I could be wrong and there may be the folks who are out picking up at two-thirty in the morning that would throw it in the back of the truck and say that's what they're doing. But it would be, it would be enforced just like any other township ordinance. And we, so to that point, it is, you know, the opt-in is whether or not you want the, the service. There, there are, I believe it was about twenty percent of township residents right now, is that correct? That don't have curbs, that don't have any kind of curbside service. So that's, they will not be forced to have curbside service either.
So you'd like longer?
Yeah.
Could you give us a, and not, not necessarily right now on the spot, Jim, but could you provide the amount of time that you think would be appropriate so they have that when they talk to the companies?
Six. Don't you think six?
Six months, six months in, six months out.
This is for all the cottages.
Well, and we'll tell them at your house, they're just, they're just picking you up in Florida instead.
You look like you just came back from Florida.
Did we, did we answer all of the questions? Go ahead. I did write that in my notes. I just don't know the answer.
Well, I think-
Do either of you know?
Well, we talked about that and I think, I mean, this is a, this is a policy question, really. It's that with the price being so much lower for waste management and with the fact that they're already covering thirty percent of the township, which makes the implementation much easier because it means that only seventy percent, or really probably less than seventy percent because not all those people will take it. So, so the, the, the transition would be easier. Plus, the environmental stewardship benefit of supporting the Detroit facility, all combined to make us feel like, yes, our general preference is to buy local and to support these local and Michigan companies. But this was hitting too many other high benefits. And so that's why our, we debated it on our subcommittee and we ended up feeling like, with, with the price and these other benefits, that waste management was the one that we recommended. But I mean, this board may end up saying, no, we really want, we really want a local. So this is just a recommendation of the subcommittee.
Can I also ask, answer one other question? I think, Kim, you asked if you're currently a user of waste management and should we move forward with waste management? Your, you would not have to establish a new account or anything. Your price would just go down when we install it substantially. Yeah, it would just be decreased. We saw, we have also talked about, like here on River Drive, half of it is Dexter Township, half of it is Webster. And we have one truck going down that road and now we're going to have another truck going down to service the other half of the road.
And five other trucks.
For five, and we have, it's there and it's also over on McKinley. McKinley are our two areas that are split. So we're having conversations with waste management to say, hey, will you offer the people in Webster on this side of the road a, a lower price so we can pick up both sides at the same time to save our road? So that is being addressed for Huron River and McKinley. It'd be, yeah. Well, there's just a couple of things, if I may, if I can.
Go ahead.
First off, it is a discussion of that point of what do we do about the WWRA? And they charge thirty-one dollars a year, isn't it? Thirty-one dollars a year go on your tax to support WWRA. And we are, we have an initiative right now to find out what the impact would be. If Dexter Township goes single hauler, what's the revenue impact to the WWRA? And those are numbers that they have to supply to us. I mean, we can't anticipate their work and their revenue. Keeping, if the trucks were still here, I mean, the bins were still here and WWRI picked those up, they would receive the income from the recycling of those bins. But that's, again, that contract comes up in February of twenty-six. But we are looking at what the impact would be on WWRA prior to. I hear you. I hear you. Yeah, well, I, I will share with you, in the RFP, it did say that we wanted all the recycling to go to WWRA. And with every bidder, they gave us a list of exceptions of, yeah, we can do this, but these are the things we're saying no to. And that was-
We did go back to waste management.
And asked, we said, how much more would it cost us to keep?
We've also been to waste management, you know, to WWRI to ask them what, we invited them to bid and they, they, they didn't feel like they had the capacity to bid. And then, and then we also asked them, well, what would be the impact of this? And, and I think the impression we have from them is they're not, they're not overly concerned about it. They have, they, I think they're very busy and feel like they're really at capacity. And so they, they are not, they're not actively advocating for us not to go this route. But, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely a good question to, for us to address though. I want to bring it here. Yep.
Our intent is to have weekly. And our conversations have been weekly.
Correct. I'm going to take a, a couple more, couple more questions. We'll go to Kim and then-
I, I want to be clear, we're not, I, I don't think we're talking about this going away. We're, we're talking about the special assessment district that Dexter Township residents pay going away. But WWRA wouldn't, we're not, they're, they, they want to have a pickup facility here. So we're not talking about this going away. We're just talking about how it gets paid for.
For, yeah. It's WWRA's decision.
Yeah.
That's way better, right? Just kidding.
They, they may, they haven't said that they're, they, we've, we've been talking with Theo Eggerman about whether we could, whether there are any options for us to reduce what we pay toward this. But no, no one is coming back and saying, well, if you reduce what you pay, we're going to take it away. That, that hasn't-
That's not.
If that's the, if that's, I think that's Karen's point is that we're talking about other funding mechanisms. But yes, that's, if, if that's the funding.
I mean, it's, it's, I forget what it is, but it's something like seventy thousand dollars of their total annual budget or something. Our SAD, so they're not-
It's eighty-six thousand dollars from Dexter Township.
I'm going to take two, I've, I've seen two other people with their hands up, so I'm going to take two more questions. Go ahead.
And there have been neighborhoods that ask to switch haulers. And then they, nobody comes to pick up these giant bins and the new hauler brings the new ones. And people lined up like picturing them on Facebook lined up somewhere and they're all trying to recycle in here these giant bins. So, um, could you pay attention to?
We, we, that is on the list, trust. Yeah, and they are recyclable, just to let you know. It, it, that's already in conversation, so, not that we have an answer.
Is there any, any further discussion from the, from board members?
Did we get all the board members' questions?
Yeah, any, any other discussion or questions from the board?
I'm curious, did you- It's on, it's on. Did you address the question about whether or not, so if, if someone went south for the winter for six months and then they came back, when they un-pause their service, is there going to be a restart fee?
That if, right now, as our conversations have held, it's a three-month snowbird fee with no, no stop-start. You can just stop. But if we want to elongate it to six months, we've got to introduce that and ask. We've got to negotiate that out. So yes, it's, we'll add it to the list to see, three months is free, six months, is there any cost? I don't know. Okay. Can't answer that right now. It's a good point to, for us to add to our topics.
So.
All righty. So does the resident have to contact waste management to opt in for services? Or do they have all of the addresses and they're just going to start picking you up? But you have to say, hey, I don't-
Every, if, if we choose to go forward with this, if that final decision is made, the month of October would be used for residents to establish accounts with waste management. We'd probably supply a list of our addresses, but it'd be everybody's, they'd have to call and set up the account on their own and set up their payables. And if you do pay by credit card, there would be a two-dollar per quarter additional charge to pay for credit card. But if you set up an A, an automatic withdrawal, it's none.
And I, I want to say that they are, both Theo and waste management, they're very excited about how big our email list is. Because we have, most of our residents are signed up for email and that's a credit to the board because that's because of the Park Pass program that we have, all those emails. And that's going to make this transition much easier.
And, and I, I, I think we need to make, you know, we don't know waste management's motive, motivation. We don't run their business. You know, I don't know. But I will tell you that we have surrounding townships watching us and seeing how this goes. And I'm sure waste management is looking to pick up those other townships. When we first started this project, there were going to be two townships going together to try to increase the number so we could try to, yeah, make it, you know, we'd go from our twenty-eight hundred homes to forty-five hundred homes or stuff. But they weren't prepared and they don't have a way to follow up with their residents. They don't have the email base. They don't have the touch points. So we're going alone right now, but there are surrounding townships that are watching this.
Brad, did you have?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if I missed the answer, but I know that there was one question. Is there a certain percentage of households that have to opt in to hit that price point?
That, they have not put any restrictions on that as of right now.
Michelle?
Last question I have, so, and trustee Sikkenga brought this up, they submitted their RFP. The prices look great. Do they have to hold true to that RFP? I, I know you said something in regards to, well, they could change that.
That would be the contract. That's the contract negotiation, right?
But it does, wouldn't that have to be signed?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the board is saying, these are the costs here, resident.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So we'll be coming to, so we're already, we've received it. We asked them for a draft contract so we could see it and share it with our attorney before this meeting just to see if there were any red flags about, okay, does this contract look consistent with the bid? And she, she, I just heard from her right before the meeting that she sees no big red flags. I mean, she wants to have the time to really review it and dive into it so we can report back to the board. And she will be making sure that when we, if and when, if and when we sign on the dotted line, it is as represented in the, in the contract, in the bid resource.
There's a lot of-
So that's a great stat.
I appreciate the clarification because when you said, you know, this is what they came back at.
Yeah.
An RFP is exactly an RFP, so I'm happy to hear that. An RFP is exactly an RFP, so I'm happy to hear that that is concrete, although it's not signed. We're giving the residents information, that's true.
Yes. We're giving residents information that came back in their bid. Came back in their bid. It doesn't mean that we've agreed to everything in their bid. There's some things in their bid we don't agree with and we have to come to some happy middle on that.
The only reason I ask is because, you know, you will get quite a few people that'll put in an RFP. My question was if other people leave and lose interest and then if this one loan company is left and then they're like, well, you know what, I'm going to increase this. That was my question.
Right, right. And if it doesn't work out, you know, we can ask the next, we can ask any of the other three if they're still open to talking to us or the worst comes to cases, we don't implement single hauler at this time. I mean, it's not-
Any additional discussion by board members?
Another question.
I, I, we already closed that section, I'm sorry. Well, uh, all right, one more. I'll be nice tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to get some of the paperwork done in October. And for Waste Management, we'd like to get their paperwork going in October. And then that gives November, December to figure out how many carts have to be ordered, get the carts delivered, set up the routes. I mean, there's a lot of work on their end that they have a whole timeline.
All right, any, Laura?
No, I'm good.
All right.
I'm good.
We, thank you all so much for attending. There will be plenty of more public comment sections before we get to any kind of decision in July. And we are adjourning the public hearing at 7:12 PM.
I will say, if anybody has questions, send it at info@dexter and we'll answer. So nice to see so many-
All right, we are, we are going to take a three-minute recess before we call the board meeting to order. Thank you. You have the new Dexter Township flag there. I'm just going to mention it since we're all, uh, the color is supposed to be Liberty Green, as in the Statue of Liberty. And, uh, it does look more green right now. If you see the one out front when the sun's shining, it looks blue. So I don't know, we'll, we'll have the blue versus green argument. We'll move into a roll call and conflict of interest check. Trustee Nolte. Trustee Abbott. Treasurer Metz.
Here, none.
Clerk Sambo Elles.
Here, none.
Trustee Sanders.
Here, none.
Trustee Sekinga. And Supervisor Scott, here, also none. We'll now move into approval of the agenda. I do have one change to the consent agenda. And that is to remove letter E, which is the approval for the supervisor to appoint two members to serve on the DAFD interlocal committee. I don't believe that committee is going to exist. Is that? Okay, you'd prefer to leave it? Okay. So do we? Okay, any other, any other changes to the agenda then? We'll leave letter E. For, I guess, because we've already started talking about, so the board members know what it, what it was, even though we don't typically discuss the consent agenda, is the, the DAFD board was setting up a committee to review the interlocal agreement. At the last DAFD meeting, it was decided that that committee was not actually going to be formed, but the city of Dexter is going to pull together meetings with the municipalities that are involved in the interlocal. Yeah, to attend, to attend a meeting. So, okay. Any, any other changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. I'll second it.
Moved by Nolte, seconded by Sanders. Any discussion? Hearing none will move into a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. We will now move into our first call for public comment. As we do that, I just wanted to introduce, as a part of the consent agenda as well, we have board and committee appointments. And I just wanted to introduce Joseph Spiegel, who is our new appointee to the Farmland and Open Space Preservation Board. And he sat through the entire earlier meeting, so I promised him that we would do that introduction here at the beginning of this meeting.
Joseph Spiegel, 795 Sour Drive, and I'm honored to be on this board. I look forward to it. I've worked with Alissa and Carolyn on some other matters and I am astounded at how wonderful everybody participates in such a wonderful way. So I'm, I'm excited and thank you, Mr. Scott. I'm going home for dinner.
Well, now, don't rub it in. Yes. Yes. No, that's what, that's where we're at. Yes. No, no, I just mentioned that he was on the consent agenda because I knew he was going to say hello at public comment. The approval, approval of the agenda. Yep. Uh, any other public comment on, on agenda items? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, oh, so moved.
Moved by Trustee Nolte, seconded by Trustee Sekinga. Uh, any discussion, not usually on the consent agenda, so we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. We'll now move into our action items. The first one up is the acceptance of financial transactions. Is there a motion for, to accept the financial transactions? They're on page 30 of your packet.
I'll second.
Sorry, I'm just making a note. It's been moved by Trustee Sekinga, seconded by Trustee Nolte. Yep, discussion. Should be 30 through 37.
No.
Oh, yeah.
Letter F, Q and A.
Yep.
It's way at the back.
Moved it to the front, yep. Let me find the page.
So they should be back to back. Right now it's in the Q and A section.
Six, yeah, 66.
66 through 68.
In 66, 68.
Right.
Uh, I'm just making a note to make sure that we- Okay. Any, any other discussion about the financial transactions? Yeah, it, there was a, so, that's actually a good point though to make so that everyone knows. We had a BSNA issue that was corrected. And so the new document that's in front of you shows the corrected version. And I think that corrects the question that you had, that you had emailed over, Karen. It's, um, Kim, our accountant, had made a change and it inadvertently changed several other spots in, in the report. And that was corrected, and that's why the new version was printed.
Balance and statement on page 64, those are general fund balances of $90,000. That's just, that's reported, it should just be disregarded. The correct balances are on the report. I'm, I'm actually not sure where the correct balances are. The, the correct balances are net with the means of value, isn't it? You can see that as a bottom line on the report.
Yes, I believe it's seven, the correct balance total for all funds is $7.8 million, not the 90. Other discussion on the financial transactions? All right, hearing none will move into a vote. All those in favor of accepting the financial transactions, please say aye. Any opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion carries. We'll now move into the decision on elected official and part-time employee health insurance. In your packets, there is a memo that was prepared. I want to, want to talk about a couple of things as we move into this section. The first thing is, you probably remember that we had passed or approved a budget as a part of our budget process for full-time employees. The amount that we budgeted for health insurance for the township was $18,000 in the current budget. The memo here summarizes several different options for healthcare coverage, for elected officials, part-time staff, potential dependent coverage. There are a couple of things that I want to highlight. One is when we passed the full-time staff portion, we passed it at 90% paid by the township and 10% paid by the employee. In reviewing all of the information in state statute, any elected officials or the government body paying for that entity, the max is 80%. It's, the max split is an 80%, 20% split. I also know when we had that conversation, there was a discussion about dependent care and our current personnel manual states that there's no coverage for dependents. We are actually obligated by law to offer an insurance coverage for any dependents or spouses. But the decision as to how much the township may pay towards that is entirely up to the board. So it does have to be offered, it doesn't have to be paid for. So I, I wanted to make sure that I, I noted that. The, the options that I've laid out here, I, I just want to say, we laid out a couple of different things for each of these individual options. The first is the total plan cost, so that number that you see there is the amount, if there was 100% enrollment based on the eligibility criteria. As with many things, 100% enrollment is not a thing that we expect to, to happen. And so the other number that you see there is the expected enrollment. That is based on talking to current employees and asking who would enroll if, if offered. And so that, that's the difference between those two numbers. I then also included a budget impact statement on the memo for each of the options. So we've already budgeted $18,000. And so what would it take above that, above that number for each of the individual options? Trustee Sekinga. It's annual budget impact and based on the expected enrollment number. Correct? Correct. Yeah, it's, these are all annualized, annualized numbers, correct? And we're starting, the, the actual coverage date would be starting July 1st. So we, we really would be half a year compared to three quarters, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I'm mixing up calendar year and fiscal year, yes. So, so yes, these are annualized costs, not prorated for the amount that would be remaining. I'll second. Uh, it's been moved by Trustee Sekinga, seconded by Treasurer Metz, to move option two, coverage for full-time staff, elected officials and dependents. So we will go into discussion. Thank you for starting the process. Trustee Sanders.
Is there a reason why we can't include in some way part-time staff into option two?
We, we can do whatever the board would like. I, I tried to not give us 1,000 options, but knew that if I presented all of these, we could pick and-
And, and would we, if we included part-time, how do I word this? So it's 80/20, number two is 80/20, right?
Number two is 80/20.
So if it's a part-time person, are they 50% of the 80? Or, do you know what I'm saying?
Maybe based on their hours.
No, 80, no, 80, the, the township pays 80%. The employee pays 20% of the, of the cost. But if they're a part-time employee and they're working 50% of the time that a full-time employee, are they actually going to be liable for 50, 50% of the 20%?
Yeah, or 50% of the 80%.
Yeah, 50, yeah, thank you, thank you. I knew I had that backwards.
So in this case, like this situation that we're hiring, 60% appointment, 24 hours a week, so 60% of 80% would be 56%. In that case, the township would pay 56%.
6% and they pay the staff's balance. Yeah. Does that make sense?
It does. I would, uh, it creates, the only challenge is that it creates a separate cla, like separate classes for eligibility. And so we would need to determine, we would need, I would want the motion to say that it's at 56%. I don't want to say 80%, 50% of 80%. I would want it to be clearly laid out so that their eligibility is very clear. But yes, I mean, I think we just did the math, so it's possible.
Yeah.
Because you have one that's working 20 hours, another's working 32 and another does 24.
Or you hire somebody that's working 10.
Based on hours.
Is there, is there a low threshold, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Because another option would be just say, if you're 24 hours a week or higher, you're-
You get healthcare, yeah.
And that's, that's what Webster-
That would be clear.
Yeah, that, Webster Townships is all an 80/20 split. Your eligibility is, theirs is 30 hours based on how they have hired. If we did that here and wanted to include part-time, then ours would be at 24. Correct.
That makes more sense.
So just yes or no, you're 24 hours a week and then you're eligible.
Right, you're working 20 hours a week, you're not eligible. Is that what we're saying?
If you work 20 hours, you're not eligible.
You're not eligible. There's a low threshold of 24 hours a week.
Does that accomplish what you were talking about, Laura?
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of like the idea of even if you were working 20, that you would be able to still buy in in some way. That you'd still have accessibility to it. Yeah, I, I hear the complicated piece.
If we made a 24-hour provision.
Yes.
But we don't have any 24 hours.
Okay.
And I, I do think if we're, if we're using this, um, this language from, from Webster, we would want to mirror their language, especially if we're doing the 24 hours. We'd want to mirror their language that it is permanent, part-time, because we- permanent part-time, because we do occasionally have, you know, an election worker or a, that would not be eligible. And I, that's why their language states that way. But for our permanent part-time positions that are part of the budget. So is that, Laura, are you offering an amendment to the, the motion?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to word it, but.
So the amendment would be to adopt option two with a twenty-four hour threshold and include permanent part-time staff.
Yeah. But they'd pay the percentage of the, would they pay fifty percent of the eighty percent? What, the township's going to pay fifty percent of the eighty percent?
What they're talking about with the twenty-four hour would be if you were working the twenty-four hours, it was eighty, twenty.
Oh, we're just going to.
Separate threshold, yeah. That's what they were discussing.
Yeah.
And plus the part-time. Part of the pay. You have lots of.
Um, alright.
I was going to ask a question.
So what, who, so I accepted the friendly amendment, but who did this?
Brad, it was Brad.
I accept the, the amended change, yes.
Can I ask a question? It's just as we grow, and I know we have, I hate to call it surplus, but let's call it a surplus. I'm just wondering what's the impact in the next three years? You know, we're saying here the impact, the full enrollment is seventy-five, or no, total plan cost is ninety-five, full enrollment is seventy-four, we expect it to thirty-five. I mean, are we going to plan in our budgetary for?
Yeah, my, my take on this, and you all can tell me if I'm thinking about it the wrong way, is that it is very hard to do this. Right, like we're, we need to get it started. One, one of the other things I didn't mention in the beginning is that this has held up our enrollment for our full-time staff. So I do want us to make a decision. It is, you know, and so I'm not saying that we should prolong it. It is hard to do this outside of the budget realm, just because it does have budgetary impact. My plan for our future budget years, as we're planning, would be to show in the budget, the full township share as a budgeted amount, so that, so that we're planning for that. Not that I think there will ever be one hundred percent enrollment.
Yeah, I, I personally would like to see the full budget, the full share of the township put in our budget.
Yeah.
Because I'd hate to say, oh, we need somebody and, oh, we can't, because then now we have to amend budgets and everything.
That, that's my plan. Whatever option happens, I will, and, and it's hard with the way that health insurance is, so I guess I'll just say this too, a lot of people don't know this. One of my original, like, one of my earlier jobs was working for an organization that worked with, directly with healthcare. And so this is a real, healthcare is one of those policies that is just very, very difficult. And so it's also really, really hard to predict the exact amounts because it varies by individual. So each plan has your premium amount, but it's, you know, they're rated by age and all sorts of different factors. So I did my, like, this was an enormous amount of trying to pull together all those individual numbers. And yes, for the, for the future budget, my goal would be to show the full township share of whatever policy we decide for a couple of reasons.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so if somebody leaves and somebody else comes in.
It could change.
It could change.
It could change.
Fluctuates.
Yes. So just like any other budget, we would probably build in a little bit extra in the budget process. It's just hard to do that.
I just think we should.
Right now. Yeah, absolutely.
Because, you know, you're probably not going to need a budget amendment to pay for this because we're, we're achieving what they call salary savings right now, which means we've got vacancies. So we're not fully expending our salary budget right now and, and that, and we're, so we're under budget. And, and this will just eat up that surplus that we're incurring. So I don't anticipate that these guys are going to come to us for a budget amendment. It's just telling us what the cost is.
Yeah, and we may have to. I mean, we may have to, but I wanted to make sure that we presented all of the numbers as clearly.
Look really simple.
That's clear. I, I can tell you it was not, but I'm glad that it looks that way. That was my goal, was to make it, make it appear.
It's not simple.
Other discussion or questions?
I don't have a discussion or question. I just have a a wealth of gratitude for this board for bringing the importance of healthcare to, to Dexter Township. I mean, it attracts quality employees. It attracts new people to want to come and run for elected position. And above all, I mean, it's, it's it's, it's just a peace of mind having healthcare. So thank you to the board. Thank you for, trustee Scott, for all of these number crunching and especially our office administrator. Well, they're the right thing. Samantha Edwards, I very much appreciate all your hard work. I mean, in this day and age, either you have insurance or you don't, or either your employer sponsors insurance for you or you pay. And in this day and age, healthcare is not a want any longer. It's truly a necessity, so. Thank you. And thank you for, you know, considering our part-time, because I mean, their health and welfare is just as important as, as anybody, so.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move into a vote. Since this is a financial decision, we'll do a roll call vote. Clerk Stambulis.
Yes.
Trustee Sanders.
Yes.
Trustee Sukanga. Trustee Nolte.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
Treasurer Metz.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott, yes. Motion carries.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Healthcare.
We'll now move into approval of resolution twenty-five, six ninety-six. And this is the approval of zoning ordinance amendments to section seventeen point zero-three agricultural, fishing, hunting and recreational standards regarding the keeping of animals. And Fletcher is at a conference today, so he is not here. So I already warned Marty that he may have to answer questions. So is, first we'll, we'll entertain a motion.
What's the page we're on?
We're on.
Forty-two.
Forty, yeah, forty, forty-two is the, yeah, is the actual resolution. Forty-one is the write-ups. And actually, Marty, I'm going to ask you to give us a quick, a quick overview, just so the board knows what, what we're looking at here.
So on a real high level, this is intended to really be better aligned with our twenty-twenty-three master plan, which, as you recall, was based on significant community engagement. And also it supported the five pillars that the township board had established, one of which was to preserve our agricultural heritage. And when I, I had a special interest in this really, when I first got appointed a planning commission, excuse me, the current zoning ordinance was just about ready for adoption. And I thought this area was kind of, kind of confusing, kind of clunky. And I was able to influence a couple of items, but overall, the keeping of animals still bothered me. We have quite a few parcels in Dexter Township of ten acres or more that are in the rural residential zoning district. I was raised on one of those. We had a small farm, you know, had a, a bunch of critters at, at various times. And it did not seem that the, the, I still call them new zoning ordinance, our current zoning ordinance, really properly allowed for that. So what this is trying to do is ten acres and above, regardless of whether you're in, in our, our zoning or not, you follow GAMS, the generally accepted agricultural and management practices, which accomplishes a couple of things. It better defines what's allowable, but also as we have tried to do with some of our zoning ordinance amendments, tie our zoning ordinance to a living procurement. So as GAMS changes, we don't have to get in and, and change the zoning ordinance. If it changes by us referencing to that, it, it automatically updates. And for ten acres and below, we, I think, better define what's allowed. We, I think, better reflect what people's practices are out there, whether we are aware of that or not as a township. And we, we clarify, actually change, like, compounding. So the, the current ordinance, you might be able to have four chickens. You'd have an acre minimum, you might be able to have four chickens on it, but it was unclear at best whether the interpretation of that would also allow you to have four rabbits. And this does a better job of, of laying that out. And then the other thing that I think it accomplishes is when we get into those areas of animal equivalency, it allows the director of planning and zoning to make those decisions, those determinate, determinations administratively. So we don't clog the, the zoning board of the fields with the whole Noah's Ark gamma of is this critter equivalent to that critter, because we can't possibly account for everything. So that, that in general is what we were trying to accomplish. I imagine there will be some specific questions about how we got where we got or, or what the interpretation is, so please.
Are there questions?
I have a last question.
Painting, are the things in red, anything that's not in red is not subject, is not the subject of the action tonight.
Right. And, and I guess I could also point out also with our our quest to make some of these ordinance, some of these sections of the zoning ordinance clearer, you know, depending on Megan's big things really, that a lot of the red in here is headings for paragraphs. So you don't have to read, in theory, you don't have to read all of the words to zoom in on the area that you want. So there's a lot more red in there than what the actual substantive changes are.
Trustee Sanders.
Um, I, I want to speak to, first of all, I really appreciate that you slashed this kind of like multiple, the, the, the multiple species problem where, you know, you can have, if you have five, if you had four horses, you can't have a goat, right? So that really helps the ordinance, because that was really confusing. What's still inconsistent is, and is the maximum, so the maximum number, column four, which is the number, maximum numbers of animals per acre is still inconsistent with the maximum number with column eight, eight, which is the maximum number of animals per parcel. So what it does is it column four defines, like, for example, goats. You have to have two acres for a first goat. Then you can have one animal per acre. So let's say you have nine acres, okay, and you have a goat for the first two acres. And then you have a goat for each additional acre, which would mean you have eight goats. You get to the maximum number and it says six. So the maximum number is still inconsistent. And what it doesn't do is help people who have between five, like, think about horses that you got to have. Well, and there, it was also inconsistent here. At one point, it says you have to have two point five acres to have a first horse, and at one point it says five acres, I think.
It does.
Okay, so that's, that's an inconsistency. And, but the, so and, and the same problem happens for horses. So where, where it isn't, where it's, where it doesn't work is for, if, if you have to have five acres for a first horse, it doesn't work for people who have between five and ten acres. Okay, so there's a difference between having five acres and having nine acres, for example. Okay, so if you have five acres for a first horse, even though it says, where's the horses? It says two point five acres. Okay, I'm on the table, on page forty-six.
Does it, does it say elsewhere that?
Yes, yes, so.
Page forty-four, on page, yeah.
But let's say, even if you go to table, so let's say you go to table forty-six and you say, okay, for a first horse, you have, you have two, two point five acres, which makes sense to me. And then you have to have an acre for each additional horse. And let's say you have nine acres, so you have an additional horse per acre, so that means that you would have, you know, my math is, is bad, but you, if you have one acre per animal, so you've got six more acres to work with. So you have seven horses, then why is the maximum four horses?
Yeah, I think we have a difference in interpretation of what's that, that's supposed to be. So critical mass, you've got to have two and a half acres to have a horse.
Right.
Maximum density, if you have nine acres, you can have nine horses.
No, you, you would only be able to have seven horses, because your first one, you got to have six or seven. The first one, you got to have two point five acres. And then there's poundage issues as well, which do, do work. The pound. Yeah.
I just want to stick with that one point you were making about horses. So the maximum number, the way that heading is, it says maximum number of animals.
Four, it says.
Right, I just, yeah, I just misstated that. So if you've got under ten acres, you've got to have two and a half.
Have your first horse.
Isolation. And then, and then you're still limited to a maximum of four.
That doesn't make any sense, given, given column four. It's random.
Like, how did, how did the committee commission?
It comes in too low, that, the maximum comes in too low on chickens, goats and horses.
Yeah, the only thing that was changed in that was rabbits.
Well, I see, so you're just sticking, so, so you didn't amend the old, so this is just, this is just, that it wasn't amended for.
So it needs to go back to the commission.
You could send this entire thing back to us.
Well, I think we should.
Or you could adopt this and charge us with, you know what, these maximums still need to be.
I wouldn't go for it. The way it is, I think you should take the maximums out. They don't make any sense because the, the column four defines, and, and I think is reasonable. I mean, I have a small hobby farm and I have a lot of experience with managing animals of various species, right? And, and column four, I think, is really reasonable. What hap, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to finish. That, what happens is that column eight contradicts column four.
It's column six.
Okay. Column six, yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Column six contradicts column four. Column four well defines, like, if you have nine acres, then you could have six or seven horses. But column eight says you can only have four. Or column six, sorry.
Because it, I need to make sure I'm looking at column six here, because it, it caps it.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. Yeah, there's a, there's a density, but still, okay, we've got X number of critters, you're going to be capped unless you have ten acres or more.
Right, so that works for, I think that these maximums work for people who have between five and seven acres or something, or two point five and seven acres, but they don't work for people who have almost ten acres.
Trustee.
I had fourteen chickens and now I've sold the plot, but I would have been out of compliance.
Right.
Because.
It doesn't make sense.
And the fourteen chickens were now excessive on the five acres.
Right.
But I think Marty is saying that if we approve it as it is, we're improving it, because we're adding this column. But I think Marty is saying that if we approve it as it is, we're improving it because we're adding this column and then direct them to address.
Still not good, so I'm not going to vote for it.
Well, but
Yeah, that would be my position.
It's not clear.
It's better than the status quo.
It was, but it's bettered because they took out the 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 multiple species. I see, that's red.
If we turn it down, then we're stuck with only the maximums. So if we approve it, it's better, and then we can direct them to improve it even.
Well, as I remember, this column was in there before. It's just dip not, right? You had this column, this number four column in there before because I was confused by it before. I used to.
Think there was an actual column four, it may have, may have had it in narrative.
Yeah.
Column six, I think there was, I'd have to, I'd have to look to see.
There was column six.
Actually have a copy of the original of what was in our zoning, if you want to look at it. But yeah, if we have the column there, the table, yeah, so it's, you can take it.
I would also, you know, well, you know how the sausage is made, it took a long time to get to this point. And I will take the blame slash responsibility for a lot of that. I still struggle with, and the example I've I've used, Trusty Abbott has heard this several times. I could have four rabbits inside my house.
Nobody would know.
My wife wouldn't want me to, but you know, it could. How do we, how do we set up that, well, you can only have four rabbits per acre? Chickens, you know, I don't, that's kind of a personal preference thing, but but even with all of this, it it still is not perfect.
Yeah.
And we should bring it more into alignment with what people would do logically. Township isn't going to go out and, oh, my gosh, you've got, you know, one more chicken than you're supposed to. But we also shouldn't set up that situation. And in fact, for the past, well, since twenty twenty or whatever, zoning ordinance was, we really have set up that situation where where people inadvertently, they've got a comfortable amount of critters. People next to them, I'm guessing, are not complaining, although I have no visibility to, you know, those would be calls that, you know, Sam or somebody would probably take. But we need to bring some logic, some, you know, some common sense to what we have. And I I totally get your point.
Well, column four does set your maximum. It's it's like, the maximum column is not necessary because column four sets your maximum. And it's actually well done, I think, because it gives a number uh, for your first animal of type. And then it gives you acreage that you need for additional animals. And and if you go by that, it sets your maximum. So I don't know why we have column six. I would recommend taking it out.
Could possibly be that we have to have a cap on on animals because what we've removed is we're saying it another way is we have a lot of four, for double counting. Before, the interpretation would have been that we could have four chickens, or we could have four rabbits, but you can't have four of each. And that is a word that is crossed out, so it's not either or anymore. And there may be some consideration to, well, darn, okay, I can have that density of goats and I can have that density of horses, but each one of those should be capped.
It's
I could have them combined.
It's capped by column four.
It's, it's
I understand.
Buying by column four, but capped by column six.
Well, and it's, and 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 column six is an inconsistent cap then to column four. Column four and column six are
I don't disagree with what you're saying, that you could, you could go through here and and you could envision some combinations where this might be illogical. I think it's, I think it's better than what we had.
It is, but it's still illogical.
So I want to, we we have two options with this tonight. We can either reject it and ask the planning commission to to look at the the portions here. Or we can adopt it and do the same thing where we say, this is the changes we would like you to look at. I would like to get a sense, I just don't want to, I don't want to keep Marty on the hot seat for too long. While Fletcher's having fun at
It's just me, Marty.
While Fletcher's having fun at this conference today. So I just want to get a sense from the board where folks are, if there are additional questions beyond what we've already talked about, let's ask those. If not, I would just like to hear sort of folks' preference for moving forward, whether we want to, you know, send it back or move it forward. Michelle.
Thank you. Okay, so in the near future, I'd like to have chicken friends. And with that, a rooster would be also important for the ladies. And I particularly, I like roosters. I live on 10 acres. My, you know exactly where I live. We were practically neighbors. But once upon a time, that whole field that consists now of four residents, that was, I want to say 100 plus, maybe 200 acres. Now it's all divided into smaller split two acres, eight acres, we have 10.1 acres, 18 acres and a, I believe, a ton. So it's concerning, when I read this, I was like, well, hold on, I'm no longer ag. Because this property is now rural residential. And I did ask our Director of Zoning and Planning, Fletcher, if there's something I could do about that. And I was given a couple of scenarios on how I could. Would it even be worth the time? You know, maybe get the chicken before the ordinance. I'm not going to go there. But so, but this concerns me because, no, literally before the ordinance. So, but so that concerns me. There's 10 acres. I could understand if I lived in Hartman Farms or Copper Meadows or Carriage Hills, chicken as a neighbor might not be so great. 10 acres, eight acres, 12 acres, 18 acres with Rulix property across the street. I, that's, that concerns me with this logic here where.
10 acres or more, just to make sure I clarify, 10 acres or more follows GAMS. There there is no, there is no township imposed on it. So.
Even if it's rural residentially zoned?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I just saw ag here, I'm sorry. Thank you.
To me was kind of a big thing because we do have, as I said, a number of parcels, 10 acres or more that are zone, are are, and I think before we were overly, well, currently overly restrictive in what we would allow there. And and that, to me, is in direct conflict with one of the five pillars deserving our agricultural heritage. We want everybody to be able to do that, but we kind of stumbled into something that doesn't really.
Well, I
One second.
Sorry.
Trusty Sanders.
Why do we need column six then? If we're following GAMS?
Right.
My point is saying.
Because that's for under 10 acres.
So that's what he's saying. We can either approve it as it is, which is an improvement over the, over the
Oh, so column six is under 10 acres.
Under 10 acres.
Excuse me, I didn't, didn't read the thing the right way.
It's 10 or more.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Never mind.
But it's not necessary anyway.
Trusty Sanders.
Okay, sorry. I still think that if Michelle had five acres, for example, a rooster is is even in in ag or rural residential, that a rooster is okay to have. Is that, am I understanding that?
Yes.
Okay, at five acres, okay. All right, I just want to be clear about that.
But I don't understand the horse thing. Sorry.
So I, I
It's 2.5 acres for the first horse and then an acre per horse.
Right.
So if you have, I'm just doing my little, if you have seven and a half acres, you could have six horses, but this says you can have four horses.
That's, that's what Laura.
That's my, my problem.
Column six did not get updated. So they added column four, but they did not update column six. So column six has not been updated. But a lot of the ordinance has been updated and it's much better than it was. But we need to tell the planning commission to update or eliminate column six. We can't do it ourselves because it's not the right process.
I got you.
So we 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 need to direct the planning commission to take action on column six or whatever.
That's what I would like to do.
And we need to decide whether we're going to approve this with the improvements in place and then, and then approve it with column six when they bring it back to us or if we're going to say no to it altogether. And that's what Lonnie is trying to do.
And who, who made the original motion?
We have not made a motion yet.
Can I make a motion?
Because I asked Marty to come up and
Oh.
Yeah, we have, we have one more question.
Just one more quick question. So when it comes down to, I'm looking at the map, I'm not looking at the, or the diagram, I'm not looking at the the wording, so if it's in here, I apologize. So let's say Laura has six horses. Does it start all over with, okay, now I have five goats, I have to have two acres per goat? Can you have multiple different species?
Yes.
Okay, that's changed, fixed that, which is important.
So you probably have packet numbers. I just have, I think, I think end of numbers on page four. This would be section, keeping of animals, lot area, down at bottom, where explains table 17.1, lot area used for allocation, one animal may be reused. It used to say may not be reused.
Right.
So we we can, under this, compound your example, okay, you can have four of that and five of that. It's not limited to, you get your goats or horses or whatever, cattle or horses.
I got excited when I read the rooster thing.
Because I feel like a 10 acre property is a lot bigger than a two acre property.
Yeah.
So 1,000 pounds on two acres will be quite different than 1,000 pounds on one. And I wondered if that should be like the rider or something.
Well, but you, it it is per, it's 1,000 pounds per acre.
It is. It's per acre, right.
And if you're under five acres, you're still limited to the number on, so.
And and I I tried to figure it out per, like, whether that was consistent with column four. In in terms of horse, horse poundage, because that's, you know, horses are about 1,000 pounds, a miniature is about 500 pounds. So, and it is pretty consistent. It, you know, we could redo the math, but the poundage seems to be rather consistent with column four. It could be, probably we could look at that more, but it, but it's, it's just column six that I'm having the big problem.
And I have to remember, that was a fairly late addition of this, Trusty Abbott may remember. There was some discussion of small horses, you know, pig meat, pig size animals. And somebody came upon, it might have been something that Megan got from somewhere else, that, well, let's just limit that to pounds then.
Um, thank you, Marty. I'm going to let you off the hot seat for at least a second. Board members, any other discussion or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I don't know if I'll get it right, but let's try it. I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 25696 as presented by the planning commission, with the exception that they come back, can we say three months? Did we put a time label on it? They come back within three months to correct column six on page, as excited on page forty-six. Does that sound, that's really confusing. Well, one's commercial property and one's regular farm. That's the difference. It was like
All right, Marty, I said I was laying you off the hook, but I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you one other question because I
It's not about commercial property.
Since our attorney isn't here, legally, are we able to tell you, give you a time limit and tell you the things that we want specifically corrected?
Fantastic. We just think we need to request that. If, if this is what you want to do, that, you know, you're going to take whatever action on this tonight and request that, whatever, within three months, we
I was just making up a date.
Come back, we'll, we'll fix. I think the request would be better than the mandate, especially since, well, next week, I think we're going to have the, our first exposure to whatever the short term rental committee came up with. That would be a big June issue.
See you in six months.
And, but I think that would be the cleaner way to deal with it. Just tell us what you want us to do and we'll do our best.
Okay.
Okay.
So not a mandate?
Now you want, yeah, not a mandate.
So
Oh, so
I'll let you reword your motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve the updated Resolution 25696 as written. And can we request the planning commission to come back in the next quarter? Is that an easier way to say it? To fix the inconsistencies as exhibited on page forty-six of the pack. How's that?
All right, I'm gonna, is there a second? All right, so it's been moved by Nolte and seconded by Trustee Sakinga to approve Resolution 25-696 with the request that the planning commission correct the inconsistencies found within
Found within table
The table, that's where I was going.
Thank you.
Table 17.1.
Okay, I want to discuss.
Yep, all right, so we've got a a motion and a second discussion. Trusty Sanders.
So that isn't specific enough for me because it doesn't direct the commission. They could take out column four and leave in column six, you know, for example. It's not specific enough. I think they should take out those maximums. And I don't want to vote, I don't, I'm scared to vote for something that isn't more specific than that. I don't think that we should, you know, I, I, I mean, I would rather say, I'm not going to vote for this and send it back with those recommendations and concerns and have them come again. It's not that I don't appreciate the work that's been done, I do. And the the things that have been changed are, are, it's, it's much better, as Karen said. But I don't think fixing the inconsistencies is specific enough. Because, because, you know, these maximums are unfair.
I, um, I just don't think it's legal for us to direct their work.
Okay.
So I don't think we can say to do this thing. I think we have to trust that after hearing the comments, that the planning commission would make that determination and it would come back before us. I, but I also hear the concern. So I I think if it's more of a preference that we wait until we have the full thing before us again, then, you know, I think that that's, that's probably the better option because I don't think we can, I don't think legally we can direct them to fix what we want them to fix. I don't think that would be appropriate.
Scared, I think, you know, but going to have a lot of people out of compliance. Right now, we have a lot of farmers, including me, you know, a few months ago, not even realizing I was we're going to, we're going to bring a lot more people into compliance. We have the ability to bring a lot of people into compliance right now because we're going to improve the ordinance. If we say yes to it as it's written, we'll say, we'll help people with 10 acres and more and five acres and less. And there's this area of the people with five to 10 acres that we still need to address. But I'm afraid that if we say no, it might, it will be months, it'll take a long time for the plan. We will, we'll help people out of compliance and we could bring them into compliance with the fix that's been pretty well.
And and we've never had a complaint. So why are we so worried about compliance? We've never even had a complaint. I'm not even quite sure why this came up, even though I'm glad it came up because it is a very, it was very confusing, the ordinance. Because I, look, I've looked at it because I'm a farmer with a a number of species of animals. And I was like, what the heck? You know, it's hard to figure it out, right? So, but there's never been a complaint, so I'm not sure that we have to be so in a rush. Why don't we get it right the first time?
Well, I, I can, it came up, I I initiated it as on the long list of zoning ordinances that I want to be able to. And there haven't been complaints to the zoning officer from neighbors who are upset about their, their neighbors. But there were many people calling and saying, I'm confused, I don't understand the ordinance, am I in compliance? So, so it's, it, it, you know, there have been formal zoning enforcement complaints, but there have been complaints about the lack of clarity in the order. And that's why, and the reasoning, and that, and and it's part of this overall process of making up results. So that's
Yeah, and I, and I just don't see why we can't get it right the first time. It's probably take the same amount of time to say no, go back to the drawing board, come to say no, go back to the drawing board, come back as it does to say yes and ha, ha, take the risk that this does not get fixed appropriately.
Well, it, it, the thing is, if you send it back to be, we just vote it down and it goes back to planning commission. You have to understand that it becomes a discussion item before it becomes a public hearing and gets voted on. So it's, it's, it won't be a quick process to turn this back around.
But would it be a, a fairly quick, like if all you had to do was delete column six?
Well, yeah, and if we, if, if we could, yeah, and I, I wish that, and I don't know that we can, I think you said we can't approve it. We could approve it with the removal of column six. But.
Yeah.
I think we were.
That I would.
Lonnie, Lonnie said we can't do that.
I don't, I.
Why can't we do that?
I just don't know that we, I don't know that we have the authority to, I. Yeah.
I think that is correct. Without, you know, without one of our, yeah, either the attorney or one of our zoning officials here. It's my understanding that against the board, something like that maybe is issue modified it. The other thing is that even for a planning condition to modify it, we will have to discuss it at one meeting and presumably have a public hearing at, you know, at the next meeting and then bring it back to the board of trustees.
I mean, we could just delete column six, say it's a clerical matter. It wasn't, it was an error in oversight. It's a clerical matter. Approve it with deleting column six and then get a legal opinion. And if Sarah says no, it was, we, we overstepped, come back.
There you go.
I like, I like that idea. I, I like that idea better.
It is a clerical error. Right.
It's inconsistent. Right.
The numbers don't jive.
If you had a paragraph where something was inconsistent, you would fix it.
And they addressed, you know, they, they addressed the, what they're trying to do is address the issues of the maximums and they just neglected to delete column six.
I guess before we go down that path, let me ask the members of the planning commission. Were there discussions over capping the maximum number of animals beyond the acre caps that are included in number four?
I don't recall.
Yeah, I don't actually recall either. I, I think there, I understand the point about inconsistencies. I think we could logically resolve that by saying that, that there's three different elements to this. One is what's the minimum size or whatever, the minimum lot size or whatever, the other is what is the density on that lot or whatever, and then the third one, which seems to be in conflict is, well, is there, is there a cap of a number smaller than what that density would give us? So I, I get the point about the inconsistency. I don't recall that planning commission really getting into that column six and understanding what was that, is that really our intent or did we just miss that because that's what was already there?
Yeah. Just seems like a mistake.
I think it was discussed in the first meeting we had because I remember that Commissioner Hurd had a question about the, the caps were inconsistent and that what if someone wanted to have, you know, uh, what is that farm club?
Four-H.
Okay, yeah.
It's a really good example.
So they would be limited on, on how many children they could have in four-H and, and have animals for their projects. But I think that was, um, that, that got resolved with, you know, moving the rabbits down and in changing some of the verbiage. But I think that's as far as we got on the cap part that I, that I recall.
Yeah. Would you guys feel that we were going counter to the intention of the planning commission? We just deleted that column six?
I, I don't answer that. I feel like we are, um, moving further and further towards, uh, questions that we should be asking our attorney. How about this? Uh, how about if the motion is withdrawn and the chair, uh, makes, uh, we would move to table this, uh, this exact item uh, until our next meeting, when I can have a legal discussion to see what our options are. And if in the meantime, the planning commission decided to make alterations, they could do that, um, rather than voting up or down.
Good idea. I'll withdraw.
Does the second also withdraw the motion? All right. So, uh, now I'll entertain a motion to table, uh, action item C, approval of resolution twenty-five, six, ninety-six until our next meeting.
I move that we table, um, resolution twenty-five dash six, nine, six.
Till our next meeting.
Till our next meeting.
I'll second.
Uh, been moved by Abbott, seconded by Nolte. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right, the motion is tabled, or the matter is tabled. Moving now to approval of resolution twenty-five dash six, nine, seven, a resolution to amend the Dexter Township zoning ordinance regarding article twenty-four, section twenty-four dot zero-three for legally non-conforming lots. Um, this is another issue that is, has been addressed by the planning commission. Um, we have had, uh, because of the way that our lake areas are, we have, um, some issues around non-contiguous lots and how, um, those are counted for acreage when building is my understanding of, of this change. Um, and this clarifies, um, the, the pieces of the zoning ordinance to, to really clarify, um, what can be done on those non-contiguous lots. The example I believe that was raised, um, was we did have, most of the time, if you think of a, a front lot on the waterfront, then a road and then another lot behind it, a lot of times the lot beyond, behind the road is used in service to the front lot, right? You'd have a garage or storage or those kinds of things on that lot. We've had an, an instance now, I believe, where another home was erected on the non-contiguous lot. And so this helps clarify, what can and can't be done in these types of lots, uh, which are, what I understand, unique to, to the township because of our lake areas. Trustee, absolutely.
Because I didn't understand these little pictures.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I didn't get it.
No, I didn't get it.
So houses on the lake, road comes through right behind the house. Property is owned on the other side of the road. By these, I didn't get the picture of that scenario. Is that property at this time, or if we pass this, to be joined with the lakefront property as far as square footage? Or does the lakefront property have to stand on its own for the square footage percentage?
Marty, would you like to answer the question? I think I know the answer, but I don't want.
That is all counted for lot area coverage or other purposes. In almost every case like that, the, uh, lot even combined does not meet the current zoning ordinances, minimum lot size for Lake Residential District. This is not intended to change that. And I think the evolution of this is, as supervisor described, you've got really what was one parcel. There's a easement, a road. Maybe not even a recognized road, that's access to everybody down the way. So it, it kind of bisected that lot somewhere along the line. I guess that got its own property description. So for purposes of township, those are counted as one. But what this mainly does is clear up kind of the logic tree that will prevent somebody from inadvertently issuing a permit that, oh, the residence is on the lakeside of that road, but there is a lot with its own property description that already before decades has been legally non-conforming. I guess we can issue that, the building permit and, and that is easier to understand, I think, the way this is laid out where you kind of got it, it's then, it could almost be mapped out. That's really what this is supposed to, if you're.
In this scenario, and just let me paint a scenario just to clarify in my own brain. You've got, uh, and I'm going to make up numbers because I have no idea of the numbers. You've got a ten thousand square foot lakefront parcel of property. And right now, I forget what the percentage is you can build. Is it twenty-five or thirty percent that you can build on your? Yeah, I, I forget the number. Let's just, let's, for Lala Land, let's say it's twenty-five percent. So you could build a twenty-five hundred square foot house on a ten thousand square foot piece of property. Now there's a road coming down here and this person also owns this property over here, which is another ten thousand feet. Are you saying that the house on the lakefront could be five thousand feet? Putting those two lots together?
If, on example, I think the more common issue that township deals with is there's a ten thousand square foot lot with twenty-five hundred square foot home on it.
Mm-hmm.
But there's a road that somehow crosses that. So for the purposes of discussion, you've got five thousand on this side of the road, which runs the lake, which is where the house is. You've got another five thousand across the road, separate property description. And for purposes of the township, those were combined to allow that house. Or, um, we did a lot of that at CPA because.
I understand what you're saying.
You know, built on.
So, but they're two, are those two lots staying separate parcel numbers?
The.
The lakefront would be a parcel numbers?
Yes, those would have two different.
Okay.
Parcel numbers, two different property descriptions.
Yep.
But for township purposes, those were determined to all be one.
Yep.
And therefore, yeah, you could, you could build a house where you're less, you're less non-conforming because of that.
Right.
And and due to what I would say, kind of a cumbersome way this, uh, section D was laid out. It took some prior knowledge, let's say, or, uh, an abnormal amount of logic, maybe you read through all of, all of the conditions and arrive at the determination that, oh no, that parcel across.
The road.
This road.
Right.
Uh, does not stand on its own and we cannot issue a building permit for that.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that, that totally gets.
It does.
Most of what it does is say, oh my gosh, we consider these to be one. Let's make sure that under normal conditions, let's say, that second parcel can't be built because it doesn't meet
Yeah.
the, the requirements. But being a pre-existing legal non-conformant, uh, it is conceivable that there are situations like that where if it stood alone on its own, then well, okay, that parcel could, doesn't matter that a hundred years ago, this one wasn't built on, I want to do it today.
Right. I'm very, I, I thank you for explaining that. I did not understand this when I read it and I'm ashamed to say I didn't read it soon enough to call you guys. Because I'm very familiar with this kind of stuff and it worries me for the township because I live in a lake community. I happen to have a, three parcels that fall exactly into your guidelines and everything that I'm seeing built in our lake community, it, I don't think it's the envision that our long-term range is. I think Dexter Township lakes are, well, I should say, some Dexter Township lakes are starting to look like Livingston and Portage Lake. They're turning into two and three story tall buildings with very small setbacks. But if that's ten thousand square foot lake property you have, which is a, a pretty good lot for our lakes, we don't have that many ten thousands, that they can come up within five feet of your border. And if you can adjoin your little hunk of property across the street, all of a sudden, you've got a five thousand square foot house rather than a twenty-five hundred square foot house. And that worries me. And we can drive around the lakes and I'll point them out to you. It, it, it's scary that some of our zone, our lake zoning is allowing large homes to be.
So are we saying that's disallowed by?
I, I particularly, I happen to own, and I get my lots probably a.
It's still confused about what.
Yeah. Does this allow for that or not?
Yes.
So, so, uh, think of my house. You know, my house. I have a house on the lake, across the road, I have a garage. You could take those two properties and put them together to build a bigger home on the lake property.
And is this.
Is this, does this fix that?
That's allowing it. Am I right? This, this document would allow some of that to happen at times.
This document should not change what we've understood has been allowed. It clarifies, kind of weighs up the logic tree better. So you have to have this or this unless this section down here, which is kind of a pre-existing thing. So it really is intended to clarify that lot fix. So whoever's issuing permits in township office can more easily go through that. And then the second thing that it does, the second change, supervisor, the stat intention, I can probably reiterate, is that presently in zoning ordinance, the township prohibits this other parcel from ever being sold. And due to advice, or on the advice of, uh, the township attorney, we don't have any role in that as a township. Now, either way, it's kind of an enforcement issue for the township. Whether, whether a permit is issued for that, it gets kind of complicated, especially around the, the.
Lakes.
Parcels around the lakes.
They're very complicated. I thought those, those non-conforming lots across from a home could only be sold to houses contiguous to those property. Like if I had my garage, that's how, that, you know, I lived out here twenty years, but I always thought, so my property across from my house, my garage, a garage, I should say, could only be sold to three neighbors because their property is contiguous with my property.
Yep. But I think we're going way beyond what this is doing. All this is doing is changing. So now I'm reading it and I'm starting to understand. All this is doing is changing it. So instead of saying, this shall happen, this shall happen, and this shall happen. It's saying, all of these things need to happen. And then they're listing, so all.
I did not understand that.
So all of this, all this is doing is, is pure, it's pure.
Training it up.
It's pure copy editing to make it, to make it, Fletcher's up, to make it less confusing when he's reading and interpreting this. That's all this is doing. So if you, if you in your mind could read this, with and without the, the, the red, you will see that all this is doing is, is making the logic tree a little more obvious. It's purely a copy edit. And for that reason, it could almost just go on a consent calendar. It doesn't even need discussion. Um, but I think you're raising other issues that might be more substantive that would be worth, you know, talking with Alicia or, or Megan or whoever about if we want to.
I did not understand that this was just becoming the decision tree.
Yes.
That didn't come through when I read this. It's just a pure.
If I could just add to what trustee Sakinga said, yes, it's, it's just clarifying under what conditions you can do this or that. The only substantive change is that township is not pretending like we have any role in whether or not it can sell this non-conforming parcel. That's on the advice of township attorney.
Because it's just clarifying. All, all it's doing is again, clarifying the grandfather clauses about, you know, what, what was in place prior to the adoption of the ordinance and what, I mean, that's how. So, so it's, it's purely, it's, I would say it's pure copy.
It's, it's pure copy edit, except that you're removing that pro, that prohibit sale. Because there was the prohibit to the sale that you could only sell to contiguous property. Now it's removing it. So if I wanted to sell my garage to anybody and it's big enough to put a house on, they're going to put a house.
Yes. And that, but that was what, that's on the advice of the attorney that we couldn't limit. Limit that soon. And just, it wa, both of these, I will say, both of these were on the consent agenda, but as witnessed in the first one, I thought we should probably just go ahead and remove them. And just, it wa, both of these, I will say, both of these were on the consent agenda, but as witnessed in the first one, I thought we should probably just go ahead and remove them.
I would have pulled it off because I didn't understand this.
Yeah. Uh, any other, go ahead Marty.
But, uh, you may or may not be able to build on that lot once it's sold.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that gets into some intricacies that, uh, probably staff and township attorney would have to get into. Is that qualified as a pre-existing non-conformant prior to even the first township zoning ordinance? Or was that created right now when I decided to split that up? Now, it also would have an impact on what's left behind that has been built upon because now all of that becomes a greater non-conformant, which would trigger an issue with township. So it, it likely doesn't make something buildable that isn't now. What we hope it does is clarify to where, oh yeah, that's not buildable because I was able to go through.
Cause you're already.
I have two of these and a third one here.
Okay. I get it now.
Uh, is there any motion for this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five six ninety-seven. I'll second.
Uh, moved by Nolte, seconded by Abbott. Any further discussion? Hearing none will move into a vote. Uh, and since, I think because it's a resolution, I'll do a roll call. Trustee Nolte?
Yes.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
Treasurer Metz?
Yes.
Clerk Stambulis?
Yes.
Trustee Sanders?
Yes.
Trustee Sakinga? And supervisor Scott, yes? The resolution carries. Not that I, um, I, I pride myself on moving these meetings along rather quickly. I heard back from the township attorney already. Uh, and she says we can alter whatever we'd like. So if we would like to remove the item from the table, uh, uh, we would need a motion to remove, um, resolution twenty-five six nine six from the table to consider it, and then we could do a motion to adopt with any changes we'd like.
I'll, I'll make a motion to remove column six.
Well, we, first we gotta, we gotta bring it back to the, to the agenda first. So a mo, the first motion that I'll entertain is to, um, take up from the table, approval of resolution twenty-five six ninety-six.
So moved.
So it's been moved by Nolte. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Abbott. Now.
Just talked about.
That's the way.
Okay.
Uh, that's the keeping of animals. Yep.
Oh, okay.
Um, now, if there's a motion for approval with any changes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve this, um, amended zoning ordinance with the removal of column six, maximum number of animals on page forty-six.
Table seventeen point one.
Okay, okay, table seventeen point one.
So it's been moved by Sanders, seconded by Sakinga to approve resolution twenty-five dash six nine six. Uh, approval of zoning ordinance amendments to section seventeen zero three, uh, with the removal, but, so we're changing it with the removal of, um, column six from table seventeen point one.
I'll second that.
Nope, it's already been moved and seconded.
Never mind.
Is there, is there discussion? Janice, did you get, I, I tried to repeat it. All right. Okay, maximum number of.
Maximum number of.
Maximum number of animals.
And in red, it says, maximum number of animals, on parcels under ten acres. So that whole column.
Any further discussion?
Uh, it has, yeah, the, the red says on parcels under ten acres. It clarifies, but we're removing it. Yep.
All right. Uh, hearing no further discussion, we'll move into a vote. Uh, trustee Sakinga? Trustee Sanders?
Yes.
Clerk Stambulis?
Yes.
Treasurer Metz?
Yes.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
Trustee Nolte?
Yes.
And supervisor Scott, yes? The resolution carries. All right, moving on in our agenda to, uh, discussion items. Um, one, I just want to point out for your review, this is, uh, the second of our three-touch method. That's the review of the planning fee schedule. Um, there were some updates that were included. That's on page, uh, I'm sorry, it was a supplemental material item that was left um, on the desk. It has the blueprint on it as well. It looks like a table, a bunch of numbers.
It's in the new supplemental?
Yeah, it was in the new, it's, it's five pages long. It was in the supplemental materials that were left on the, on the table. Um, so, uh, any questions about the planning fee schedule? Um, again, this is just our second touch, so we're not making any decisions on it today. I just wanted to make sure that everyone had seen it, um, and we will do a discussion. Yes, we. We have made some, um, some revisions, uh, that are included here.
And can I ask, what is the WWRA recycle fee for a hundred and eighty-nine dollars?
Um, I believe that's what's charged to all new build.
New builds?
Ri, new build houses.
Builds are charged that.
Yes.
And then they're hit with the thirty-one dollars a year?
Is, is it purposeful that this says two thousand and twenty-three or?
This is, that's when it was enacted. We haven't.
I, I see.
So the, these are the updated ones that we would enact and we would say effective, whatever date we have.
I see. Okay.
These have been our prices since two thousand and three?
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
What the old, yeah.
Why you made the changes?
Um.
Like have the old in the red?
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure that we have a, um, a copy that shows any of the changes that were, that were made. That there, we had several inconsistencies and because we changed, for example, what was required to have a major or minor zone, or to get rid of the, the minor zoning permit, um, those are, that's what precipitated the conversation around the changes, that, those inconsistencies.
You know, so there was a lot in it.
Yep. We'll make sure we have that.
Could we see the old numbers like in red or something?
Yep, we'll make sure that we have that when we bring it up for actual approval. Any other discussion or questions?
So this isn't a time to ask and make changes, it's just a time to ask questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so, video of meeting. Now day and age, everything's online. Are we gonna, if, if someone can't find it, are we gonna chart them? What do we, what would we put it on?
No, I'm, well, maybe not videoing, but if someone, let's say an HOA is holding their annual meeting there and they want us to record it for their future use.
Well, that makes sense, saying it that way.
So maybe we just need to change the word video.
There, there will be some of these as well.
Well, yeah.
Go ahead.
And like, for instance, black and white standard size sheets. So people come in, they have, they have a variety of, um, reasons to come into the township. A lot of the time, whether the planner or the assessor. So if they want a copy of, let's say, an affidavit or whatever they're dropping off, we're gonna charge them twenty-five cents. Especially if Chris is only in the office, you know, one day a week. I, I'm just. And then what is a large color format? Is that Fletcher putting on a map? Okay.
Yeah. And I don't, I actually don't think we have the, we, we got rid of the large format printer. So I don't think we provide those anymore. But yes, that's what it was.
So just, just a couple like.
Yep.
Like questions.
Uh, so I will say, anyone who has any of those items that you think should just be gone?
Email Fletcher.
Feel free to email, yeah, Fletcher and copy me and we'll. All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll move on to letter B, which is scheduling the board strategic planning session. Um, we, this, obviously, the strategic planning session, um, will be, uh, open meetings act. So we will set a special meeting time for that, and I wanted to start the discussion, um, today of looking at um, specific timeframes when, when folks would like to do that. I think, um, typically our packets and the activity i- is lighter in the summer. Uh, that may not be the case this summer, uh, because we will have short-term rentals, uh, and, um, more discussion of, uh, single hauler, those types of things. So it may be that we want to look into end of summer, early fall, before we get into the real budget session. Uh, but I do want to have the initial discussion today. Um, trustee Sakinga has, has graciously agreed to lead the session again. Uh, we did a trade, so I'm going to lead the one for Daphty for her, and she's going to lead the one for us, for the board. Uh, and so, um, I, I don't know if you have specific dates that you wanted to, to throw out or?
How much time are we talking?
Yeah. We were gonna do a strategic plan from scratch like we did the last time. I think that was two and a half day sessions, or maybe even two, like six hour sessions launched. If we want to, and this is a different board, but substantial carryover. So if we, if we feel like we want to stick with the same mission, vision, and big goals of, you know, which we, you know, which we were just flashing across the screen, good government, environmental stewardship and so on, then it's really just tweaking it, revisiting it, making sure, reaffirming that these, that these remain the priorities of the board and editing it. And that takes a lot less time. We might even be able to do that in two hours, you know? But if, but if we want to start from scratch and rewrite our mission statement, rewrite our mission statement and redo the big, the big very goals, then we would need to just do a full-on strategic planning session, which is typically at, at least one per day, but usually two. So I, I don't know. And I, I mean, I guess you, I don't want to point that, you know, call on anybody in particular, but Alicia and Brad were not members of the board when we made that decision.
Neither was Lonnie, wasn't he?
You weren't either, so.
I was there for the second one. I was not there for the initial vision setting, but I was there for the second evening session where we set goals.
I think, did I, I thought I did attend one of your strategic planning, yeah, because you graciously invited the several members of the public.
Yeah, you were there.
Yeah, the public.
I was gonna say, I, and it'd be nice to see if you guys are on board with what we did fifteen years ago. But it is also, I don't know if we've done a great job selling our vision. Do you know what I mean? Like.
That's getting me, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying if we change it, then we gotta start a whole new sale. Do you know what I mean? That's all I'm saying is, I don't think we necessarily have to change our vision and goal, is what I'm saying.
Thing I think is that strategic plans are usually longer than four years, but that one was set at, it was actually less than four years because we didn't even do it. You know, we did it later, let me hear into our service, so we haven't accomplished everything that we.
Mm-hmm.
So let's, um, we'll put, uh, the, the treasurer and trustee Abbott on the spot, and I'm gonna ask your opinion. Do you, do you feel like updating is good, or would you rather start from scratch?
Well, I really liked what, what you all did the last time. And so in my opinion, I think updating it, um, I, I think updating it would be fine.
I, I would also agree with that. I mean, I like the vision that was set forth, you know, previously, and just making updates and, you know.
So then we just do something similar to what you attended before and was helping with, and we just feel like this is what we said we're gonna do. This is what we've done. This is what was on the original list that we crossed off. I'll take that session, the notes from that last session, and basically repeat that session and, and update, and we can update language, and we can also decide if we want to invite the public to participate. What we did the last time was, it wasn't, we did it and the public witnessed it. We invited the public. I think Marty came, I think Lonnie.
Barry.
I always.
I do that too. I do that. I know. I do the same thing.
I, I bet Barry, I've been called way worse. I bet Barry.
But, so, 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 and I like that. If you guys all like that, but it requires the board to be on board for that. We invited all our committee members and volunteers and.
So let's plan on, let's plan on doing that, and we'll do, we'll plan on updating the strategic plan.
I just think that maybe two hours is a little bit too little for that, for, for a review, but maybe, maybe not. I mean, I just. Did, I liked it, but it.
It was hush, it was rush.
More, yeah, it was rushing. It was more like a community engagement, um, decision-making session. It was, this feels a little bit more like a review to me. So I don't know.
So maybe.
Maybe there's an hour where we're together and then the community, I don't know, maybe some, two to three hours, I'm thinking.
Maybe we'll, so let's, let's go with, we're gonna update it. Um, I'll work with, with trustee Sakinga to, to work on kind of what the agenda might look like for that, Laura, for, and figure out timing. And then at our next meeting, we'll have an agenda item with several dates to pick from. Uh, and we'll actually set the date at the next meeting, the amount of time, and, um, and then we'll go from there. Does that work for everybody? Great. Uh, next on the discussion item is buy protect sell policy. I want to call everyone's attention to this. Uh, Barry is here if we have questions. I want to say, um, I, I'm gonna be very vague intentionally here. Um, this is a policy that I would really like everyone to review. There is a possibility that, um, that we may have to have a special meeting over, uh, a property, um, that would need to be enclosed session um, to discuss. So we did not have all the information to be able to do that here tonight. Um, but I want everyone to review this policy in case it's something that comes up before our next meeting. Um, this was also an item listed in reports. Um, the clerk had this as a part of her report, uh, I believe it was last, last month or February. So it is coming up now. This is our second touch, um, but I did want to highlight it. And if any of you have questions, I know Barry's here, um, if anyone has questions on, on the policy itself.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
On page fifty-five, top paragraph, sorry Barry, not that I need to, I just don't quite understand. It says it may be necessary to engage a private bo, uh, buyer to hold title temporarily. How, do we just, do we, is it just a contract they're holding title for the township? I guess I don't quite understand that. Why would we have a private individual? Where, where's? Uh, first paragraph, page fifty-five.
Oh.
I mean, I think I get the general concept of all that. I just, I don't understand private holding title.
Yeah, so sometimes you need to act more.
Yeah, wait, yeah.
Um, somebody might step in, say, you know, I've got the money to be able to secure this property.
Okay.
So we can have a scheduled special board meeting or whatever it is to improve the funding.
So they're, so some, but they could also just keep it then.
Yeah, I suppose, but you know, if it's somebody we identified, it was a conservation partner.
Uh-huh.
You would.
You're trusting them.
It could be a handshake agreement or it could be a contract.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of asking. Is there a contract to make that come back? Or, you know, you come over here and you go, hey Karen, here's a hunk of property. And I go, okay, let's buy it.
Yeah.
Like, does it, I think it would be a contractually that it would have to go back to the township for the buy-sell. I mean, I understand the quick moving. I totally get that.
Any other questions for Barry?
Uh, that would be one option, correct. You're not, um. You can use whatever funds you have available.
I mean, this is definitely about this. I, I understood those points. Um, what are the federal funds trying?
So we have four properties that we see federal grant awards last year. And we have signed agreements to admit those federal funds. And all indications are that when we go ask them for those funds to be wired to the title company for closing, that they will be, that will be at last. There's also several other properties that were submitted for this most recent, um, application. And there's been no word on those at all. We're still hopeful that some of that money will shake loose. There were three application rounds, um, most recently here. Two of them were the replacement reduction act funds. Third was the regular thorough. And there was been some education that those regular thorough funds would actually go through, those are actually, I mean, all of those approved by Congress and should work its way through. But that's all very much a unknown. Similarly, um, you may recall, we've had the nearly twenty-five million dollar grant award from the resource conservation partnership program, also probably, um, granted through the barnet. And that grant award was approved, the contract language was agreed to, and nobody's been authorized to sign that yet. But we're still hopeful on that as well. But we're still hopeful on that as well. So all our stuff, it seems like it's gonna look, the newer stuff, more uncertain. But we haven't given up. We keep looking at it. It's still in conversation with the Natural Resources Conservation Service of, uh, US. You know, who knows what the future will hold.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been an interesting night, huh?
Yeah, trustee.
Just clarifying in my head. So, uh, the Foss board says, okay, we, a piece of property comes up, but it doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to go through the Foss board or does it have to go through the Foss board? It naturally probably would go through the Foss board. Okay, so the Foss board says, oh, this property is really good, but we don't have time to go get the federal funding. So the Foss board says, oh, let's make a buy on it. Does the, the, the trust, the board, the trust, Board of Trustees, do we call a special meeting to set that off quickly? Like ultimately, this board has control over what not, Foss doesn't have control maybe over their dollars, but not the general fund dollars if we need it. So we'd have to have a special meeting or something to come back and authorize it. Is that our just? Okay.
Yeah, we have to authorize any of the spending.
Just clarify.
Special kind of circumstance. Um, you know, I've done two of these kinds of projects in Syle Township and it were both cases where an older gentleman passed away and it went to the kids. The kid said, we just want to get rid of it.
Gone, yeah.
You want to conserve it, you gotta buy it. You don't want to apply for the conservation, then wait, then wait, and then try to sell the property. You just said, you want to buy it.
Totally got it.
So that was one possibility or, um, you know, develop a better property and say, you know, if you want to conserve it, then you gotta buy it.
Okay. So we vote on this next month? Cause this is the second touch?
We could take action next.
Take action next month.
Yeah. Or in a special meeting, if, if something came up before next meeting. Yeah.
Basically supplies you some more.
Oh, I understand that.
Done in Syle in most cases is, uh, going through this process. It's identified in the policy statement to find a new buyer or transfer the property to them because, um, public entities are not eligible for state and federal grant funding and we're not for county money either.
Right.
And so if we can find that buyer, transfer the ownership.
And then acquire the funding.
Agreement that they're not going to develop. They're gonna sell up the usement and reassemble the funding. Then we go find the funding, we buy the usement and then, yeah.
Okay.
A special circumstance. And again, it's only happened twice in Syle. In our city green belt program, can still establish one style that they learned and just bought a property and kind of made a couple of pieces and sold it off. Very similar process. So it can be a little more intentional also, but I think of it more as, more as special kind of circumstances.
I get it.
And just, just to clarify, just because we, if we passed the policy next month, we would still have to approve any expenditures or funds.
Got that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you Barry.
Thanks Barry.
Moving on in the agenda, uh, to staff and committee reports. Um, the only thing I want to highlight since he isn't here is Fletcher's report. You'll see in the code enforcement section, um, 76. Uh, there, in the code enforcement section, there's a note about hillside acres. Um, and they were working to address several issues. As of yesterday, all of those issues have been taken care of and so they are back to issuing permits. But I know that the board had asked, uh, Fletcher to really pay attention to the new development and, uh, he's been doing so. So just wanted to make sure that I highlighted that and to let you know that, um, that they're back to issuing permits because of, the issues have been cleared out. Um, any other questions about any of the committee reports or staff reports? All right, uh, hearing none, we'll move into data and performance metrics. Any questions about the fire department or sheriff's, uh, sheriff's reports? Sorry, the sheriff's report is not in here. We will send that out. They've been getting, we've been getting it, um, way late. I think we got it yesterday. So we'll make sure we get it out to everybody. We'll send it when we send the sheriff's report as well. Down to our second call for public comment on non-agenda items. And I believe we have someone who has waited very patiently. Thank you so much for waiting for us.
My name's David Fowler. You can use my address, but 7295 Webb's Landing, uh, North Lake Fireworks. So that came up on us and unfortunately, so which would be our second year taking over for Dave Steinbach. What he did was amazing, uh, it cost. Um, we have sheriff approval, we have Dexter Fire Department approval, we have insurance. The information is at the, yeah, the building, our, um, it is there. Uh, paperwork has been set up, but it's not ready. We are looking for July 5th. That's sad, that's Saturday. Uh, and I apologize, Sam has been calling. She called us and said, what are you guys doing? Um, and so I apologize. I'm, obviously I can't get a poodle from you now because we don't have everything ready. I wanted to at least be here and say, we want to do this. We will have everything, but we are, again, unfortunately cutting it close like we have left here. So I apologize for that, but I at least wanted to say, we want to do it. Certainly, the people around the lake have been calling, wondering, making sure of that. So I wanted to at least touch base with everybody and say that to you. If somebody has a question, I'm happy afterwards or whatever you're gonna do, I'll be here, um, for that. But I wanted to at least say that to you guys. We are having Blast, the company that did it last year. They organize it, they're professional, they're doing Dexter Day, they're doing different things around Dexter's. Uh, and so it's just not, it's not the individuals. Again, we are having a professional organization set that up and do that. So just so you know, um, the only other thing that I had, just because you talked about it and it kind of came from my world also, be very careful with health insurance. The management of, and I think it's very important to have, um, part-time. It be part of it. That's, I think, it's just my own belief in it, but the management of it, be very careful how you work that out. It's kind of my world and it can get sticky.
Oh, so they can call on your expertise.
For the warning.
You just raised your hand.
It can get, it can get, um, but I appreciate it. No, I, I appreciate.
Thank you. And just so you know, we, we do intend, Sam and I have talked about this, we do intend, we believe we'll have all your paperwork. So we do intend for it to be on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
And, and again, you should yell, not just call and be very nice. Then that, that caught up to us again and we want to blame somebody, put it on me, but that's what happened. But again, where, which is not, we're not the ones lighting the wicks. We do a professional doing it. Um, it's just the paperwork is what.
It was an incredible show last year, I'll say that.
The, the response was fantastic. Um, and we're excited and having Blast do it and the learning of these different fireworks. You're like, hit with Christmas. It's a day. So, um, the paperwork is that.
Can I ask one other question if I could? How do you fund that? Do the, do the neighbors, do you have a, do you have a donation? I think there used to be a donation jar at North Lakes Store and stuff.
At one point, actually before my time, there was actually the tar jar.
Yeah.
Uh, now it's just letters are sent, emails are sent. And, and now it's all essentially electronic or checks.
Yeah.
Checks come to my office.
Okay. I was just wondering, I was wondering how it's funded.
The numbers in terms of, well, that contribute. It's, it's impressive. I was very impressed.
My one suggestion is to tell us a suggested donation for those of us who may live in that area who had no idea if I was donating enough or not. Yeah, there you go. That's. That's exactly it. That's.
And we have talked about that. It's, I, I don't know.
It's hard to ask.
Yeah.
It's, you know, yeah, the number I have in my mind, oh, it's very reasonable, but let's be honest, it's not. But I agree, you're, you're right. And we are considering putting, listen, at the very least, we're letting you know, this is what it costs.
Yeah, yeah. Most people have no idea. That's my only, that's my only. Sorry. And normally we don't do back and forth with public comment, but you were so gracious with your time to stick around with us.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other issues, comments or concerns of board or staff members? Sam?
No, I just want to thank the board for approving the health insurance. Um, I think that that's, I think it's great. I'm very, very grateful that it was approved. I think it's gonna help with staff retention and getting new people in here. And, um, I know that some of you guys have touched on it, but healthcare at this point is kind of just like a rite. And I'm just very grateful that the board is now offering it to a lot of officials in part-time. So I just want to say thank you to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For all you do.
Thank you, Sam.
Janice? Trustee Sikenga? Trustee Sanders, I'm just going down the line.
Yes. Um, I, very quickly, I just want to remind everybody that we're having a community conversation about immigration on June 10th. So that'll be before our next board meeting. So I'll, this will go out in the loop. But I wanted to read it, this, this short advertisement so that people who are listening from home or whoever can, um, remember and know that it's going on. So we're calling it, let's talk about immigration, a community conversation. And, um, I just want to say that our current immigration system is complex and affects all families in our community. From those who have been born into U.S. citizenship to those who have recently migrated to the United States. Federal immigration law and policy is complicated and wrought with problems that lead us to misunderstandings, creating unnecessary divisions that undermine our unified community spirit. Let's get together and talk about it with community members and immigrant rights advocates who have been responding to the effects of immigration policy in Washtenaw County for decades. Learn some basics of immigration law and policy, myths and facts associated with migration and local organizing toward humane immigration reform. This is hosted by Dexter Township trustees, myself, Laura Sanders and Karen Nolte. And it's on Tuesday, June 10th at 6:30 to 8 o'clock in Dexter Township Hall here at 6880 Dexter Pinckney Road.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, and, and the people who will be presenting are myself, as I've been doing this work for a long time, Ramiro Martinez, my spouse, and other community advocates.
Great, thank you. Clerk Stambulley?
Uh, I guess just two things. Great job, Karen Sikenga and Karen Nolte. Trustee Sikenga, trustee Nolte on the single hauler presentation. Very well done, very informative. And again, a heartfelt thank you to this board for bringing healthcare benefits and understanding the importance.
Treasurers? Trustee Abbott? Trustee Nolte?
Just a quickie. I have to say, we have two roads left to do on this darn broadband. And, um, we are fighting the last two roads we funded. Uh, we already funded and paid the check to, uh, Jeanette Drive. But with the big storm up north, the crews, the MEC crews went north and hopefully they come south in the next short bit and we get that funded. And we are still waiting for the full engineering report on Tanglewood. So I don't want residents to think that we have forgot them. I'm getting tons of phone calls, but we're still working on it. It is just a snail's pace.
Great. Uh, the only thing that I, the, uh, the only other thing that I have is, um, thank you to the board for another lengthy but efficient meeting. We got through a ton of stuff again. Um, and, uh, so I appreciate everyone for that. Please, um, do pay attention. Like I said, we, there, there may be, um, a special, the need for a special meeting. Um, we will only do that if we have to, um, but we'll keep you all informed. And I really appreciate, um, everyone uh, and echo the, the comments around healthcare. I think it's one of the, the issues that, um, I remember talking to, to trustee Sikenga when she was supervisor. I know it's been an important issue for this township and for the board. Um, so I'm glad that we were finally able to, to get a policy in place. So thank you all for that. And lastly, to the, uh, to the members of the community who are here for our, um, for our public hearing earlier today. Uh, it was great to see everyone here, um, to get comments and questions and be able to answer those questions. So I look forward to continuing public discussions about, um, both single hauler and, uh, new discussions coming soon, as I look at Marty, about short-term rentals, uh, which we will be hearing from folks, uh, should be going to the planning commission as well. So thank you all so much. With no further business before the board, uh, the meeting is adjourned at 9:11.
Wow.